Well, good morning. It is now nine o'clock and we welcome everyone to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. I did see Commissioner Holmes walk in, so hopefully he'll be right back, but we'll begin. We have a quorum, one, two, three, four, and we'll go ahead and begin the meeting this morning. Again, we welcome everyone to today's Board of Commissioners meeting and those who are streaming in, we welcome you as well. So as we begin, we'll invite up Mr. Dunn Ash for our invocation. And Mr. Ash, if you will pray for one of the pillars and matriarchs of our family, Ms. Shirley Holloway has transitioned and she also served on our Henry First Board. So if you will include her family and thoughts of her in the prayer, we sure would appreciate that. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Good morning. Let us pray. Eternal Father God, our Lord, Savior, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, God. The day that you created, we shall rejoice and be so glad in it. Lord, we take a moment to remember the family and remember the legacy of Shirley Calloway, God, for how she served this community and served the people of this community. God, we recognize and realize that your word says, "Absent from the body is present for the Lord." But Lord, we lift up that family, God, and every family that's going through bereavement, God. Lord, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, God, as we endeavor to do your will, God. Let us be good public servants, God. As we work through this COVID-19 situation, God, we know that you're still in control. So, Lord, we ask you to gather through this meeting and the work of this great community. In everything, Lord, we do, we give you praise, honor, and glory. In Christ Jesus' name, we pray with all thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen, and thank you, Mr. Ash. If you stand and join me for the predigent allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you and we appreciate you. We were now called today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. So at this time, I will open the floor regarding the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any changes or revisions to the agenda today? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm trying to find the numbers here. I believe there was an item in reference to the water authority, and I'm looking for that number. If the county clerk can help me with that, please?
Sure, that is actually item nine on page five of the agenda, if you've got the one I printed.
I would like to table that item, please, for further discussion.
Okay, we'll actually, are there any suggested changes? Then we'll come back and vote on each of those items separately. Okay, is there any other revisions to the agenda? Okay, so there's been a request to table item nine, which is the Henry, or the resolution approving the reaffirmation of the two mil tax levy. So we've got a request for that. Is there a second? We have a second. We have a first and a second. All in favor of tabling that, please signal by raising your hand. See two, those in favor of moving forward. Three, so it will remain on the agenda. Okay, are there, okay, so at this time now, we will approve the acceptance of the agenda. So at this time, we're open for a motion to accept the agenda. Commissioner Barham has a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor. Okay, the agenda has been accepted. We'll now move into the recognition of our Henry County retire, employee retirements, and we welcome up Mr. Brad Johnson, our Deputy County Manager, for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. Good morning, Board members. This morning, as I do at the first meeting of each month, is recognize our retirees. And it's like a broken record, but it's so important to us here in Henry County is our employees, which they're the spokes in the will to make the will turn every day and to make sure Henry County serves correctly and efficiently. This morning, we have five retirees. I think four are with us this morning, and we'll recognize them at this time. Our first one is Denise McBroom. Denise, there she is. Come on up, Denise. I'll call you up one at a time. We'll separate, and we'll get a picture with the board right after that. And Mr. Cooper's got a, you hand it to Cooper. He's got your plaque for you and think about your twenty, or thirty-six years of service. I had thirty-six years of service for Henry County Sheriff's Department. We appreciate her for her service. I know Denise for a long time. We've been together for a long time in Henry County and has done a great job and is a great asset for our community, and she will be missed.
Thank you.
That's right. Our next retiree is James Lewis, or Ed Lewis, Battalion Chief for Henry County Fire Department. He could not be with us due to a conflicting priority this morning, but want to congratulate Ed for his twenty-six years of service with Henry County Fire Department. Mr. Lvester Sims, unless he's here with us, right? Okay, he was supposed to be here with us. He's had twenty-three years with our Sheriff's Department in serving our citizens in Henry County, and let's give him applause for his service. Our next is Hibbert Osborne, or Ozzy Osborne, we call him. Ozzy couldn't be with us either because of the conflict and scheduling, but we recognize him for his twenty-two years of service with Henry County, and we appreciate his service, and he will be missed also in the fire department. Let's give him a round of applause. Joseph R. Reagan is Mr. Ronald Reagan, Captain Reagan as we know him in the fire department. Eighteen years of service this tenure. He actually has a lot more years of service in the fire service than just eighteen years. As most of you seen, he was an inspector and investigator for Henry County Fire Department and has touched many lives and done a great deal of permitting and building and inspections over the last eighteen years as the growth happened in Henry County. And he's been very detrimental in that process in making sure our buildings and our community is safe. So, thank you, Ron, for your, Captain, for your dedication in serving Henry County. And Mr. George Patterson with sixteen years of service with Henry County. George, I'm just gonna still call George every other morning, just to make sure, see what that dirt is moving out here on whatever road I see, and just to bother him. But George has been detrimental in our building department. He has taught me a lot as I transitioned over here three and a half years ago and learned the processes that I thought I might have known a little bit about, but I didn't. He took me under his wing as a department head three and a half years ago, and his service to the community, his service to our building community has been second to none. So, thank you, George, for your service, and you definitely will be missed. And Chair, with your approval, I'd like from the line up, if you guys could stand, let's get a picture of our retirees.
We'll just stand for social distancing. If you make sure that they're safely standing as well. Thank you. And safe congratulations again to all of our retirees. I think I added up one hundred and thirty-nine years of collective service that are now retiring. So blessings to you all and best wishes in your time of retirement.
Thank you, everyone, and good luck on your next chapter.
All right, well, thank you again. All right, well, now we'll continue on with Mr. Johnson with our capital update. So we welcome you to move forward with that.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Up presenting this morning, just an update on our capital. As you know, about three months ago, four months ago, we approved, or you guys approved, a forward vision for our county with a twenty million, or seventeen million dollar COPS bond to help us get back a shot in the arm to go along with our SLOs vehicle replacement and our capital, overall capital plan. Just want to give you a quick update of what we've done so far and what we're doing in immediate future as we move forward. So our capital project was seventeen million roughly to year-to-date, or year-to-date since it's been approved, seventeen point one has been spent on that, or encumbered in that project. As for categories, we really focus is fleet, equipment, facilities, and So far in fleet, you guys have approved the purchase of the trucks for risk management, facilities, DOT, technology, CDBG vehicle, recreation vehicles, airport, senior services, coroner, animal control. And we're excited, let's pause for a minute, because we're very excited, especially for animal control and our Meals on Wheels team. Our Meals on Wheels have been some, basically some, I don't know where we got the vehicles that we have, but some are pickup trucks that, when the food, we actually call it our shake 'em up food process that we currently use. But we're moving to a small van that will be labeled the Meals on Wheels and also have a hot and cold section for our seniors and our citizens that we deliver to. As we said right now, it's just in a pickup truck. This got a camper on the back, and we're very excited about that. The second thing is our animal control vehicles. In the past, we've had a pickup truck with a cage in the back, not compliant with code and current best practices. So we're moving to a professional, adequate, up-to-code, best practice animal control vehicle that's made to, I guess, take care of our animals and get them to the right places in a great environment. So we're excited about some of the upgrades we're doing. Also in fleet, our dump trucks, a bucket truck, our rubber tire wheel loader you see there, our excavator. We have some vehicles for the solicitors office, sentence enforcement, the amelices you guys approved back six, eight months ago, and the economic development vehicle. Part of that also, the capital is the equipment for the robots for police and the flock cameras, which have been very effective, cameras on broadcasting or getting the network out to help, not just solve, but help prevent. And we used the Jonesboro Road corridor during the holidays. Two years ago, we had a great number of break-ins. Last year, I think we had two in the holiday season. So the guys out there and the girls are proud of them for the job they're doing, patrolling and using their tools to make Henry County safer. And the robots, as definitely can, if we can put a robot in place of a human in a safety situation as much as possible, we definitely want to use mechanical devices rather than limit the danger as much as we can. Facilities, if you see the jail, main jail and annexed roof on them, public information improvements for technology, the public safety annex roof, the courthouse fiber ring, one of the requests the board made a priority, is the internet and fiber at the courthouse, and it's been terrible. So that's in the process now of developing that entire ring around all the county facilities on the square for our judicial ring, is what we call it, to make sure they have adequate bandwidth and adequate technology in the facilities. Our elections building that we're pretty proud of, started construction and renovation in the first of the year at the Fred's Building, and you know I have our coroner's building that we have just completed. We're waiting for the fiber to be ran from next door over that building, and it will be total operation. We do have a CO already in place for that. We also have a courthouse consultants, I forbid, as directed by the board, is to get that plan, our official courthouse plan, our judicial plan for the future, how to update that and move forward in the future of getting our judicial facilities upgraded. Some things in progress, I think, might be one of this thing. I know in the next commission meeting, there's definitely several recreation projects, but fencing, tennis court repair, pickleball courts, replacement netting, parking lot improvements, lighting upgrades, concession upgrades and replacements are all part of the recreation plan, which is over five point two, I think, million is in recreation. We're excited about that because our parks are in need to make things, you know, just to put a little love in the park system. Also coming up next is it's time to, as we mentioned, the SLOs replacement vehicle program. It's time to start that program that goes along with this, which includes our first round of police cars, some building, development trucks for the first of the year, amelices, some sheriff vehicles to move on that four-year plan that you guys approved to be in with the SLOs committee back for SLOs five. So the diligence you guys have and the direction that board has given us to move forward and making sure our staff has the correct vehicles, the correct equipment, and up-to-date, modern equipment to do the job right the first time, we're excited about, and we want to thank you for that. I'll take any questions.
Okay, we've heard the update. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
I'd just like to know, how are you keeping your inventory and managing, liquidating the vehicles that you're replacing or equipment that you're replacing? How are you doing that?
Yes, ma'am. So Joni Swarfield, our fleet manager, does a mighty job. He has a term we're trying to do, it's called a right fleet, right size. So our right fleet, right size program is kind of a one-for-one. So when you get a new vehicle, you have to turn one in, which then comes to you guys for auction. We put on Gov. deals, and it's auctioned off out of liquidation from a county asset. The issue we've had in the past is you get new vehicles and they just keep piling up in departments, and we don't want that to happen. We want to make sure we have a right-sized fleet for our right-sized mission to make sure that we do that. For example, if you remember, two years ago, we had to replace a ladder truck. Just the lease payment on that one ladder truck, we were encumbering more money on the old truck and maintenance costs per year than the replacement, the lease payment for that new truck. So we're doing the same with that, Commissioner. I hope I answered your question, but we liquidate the older vehicles as we replace the new ones.
And when you liquidate those vehicles, regardless of the departments, those funds go back in as a separate line item, or do it go back into the general fund?
It goes back into the general fund.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Well, comment I'd like to make, I know you were commending the board for, you know, again, helping this capital plan to move forward, but I do want to commend the department heads for identifying the critical needs and to also move forward soon after we had made the approval. So we just commend you all for, again, all the work that you're doing as well to make sure that the priorities are set in the right place. So, thank you much. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I know you probably do not have an answer to this this morning, but I would like a report on it. I know that Commissioner D. Clemmons has been constantly asking about minority involvement in all our contracts and dollars that we're spending. Capital improvement within a county in SLOs dollars should be an economic engine for the county itself, which simply means we hope a lot of those dollars are turning in small businesses in the county and that minority participation is up. As you do this, somewhere along the line, we need a report as to how these dollars are being spent. I know I've been asking for two years, who do our roofs? I still don't know who do our roofs and how many, how dollars are spent there. We need a report on this so we can make sure as we approve these capital projects and bring dollars into the counties, that these dollars are staying within the county and not walking out of the county. So please give that report to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you again. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll now move into the consent agenda, and I will read through those items. And again, if there's any that the commissioners wish to be removed, we will highlight those after I read those that are on the consent agenda. The first one is from animal control, and it is a resolution accepting the donation from the estate of Clarin Court in the amount of forty-six thousand twelve dollars for an animal, the Henry County Animal Shelter. Under facilities maintenance, we have a resolution approving the turnkey roof replacement and building envelope deteriorations for repairs at the Henry Probate Court. We also have a resolution approving the turnkey roof in for the Henry County Fire Station, number one. Under parks and recreation, we have a resolution awarding bid twenty-one dash thirty-seven for new pickleball courts and the renovation of tennis courts at Hidden Valley Park. Under the county clerk, we have a resolution to approve the 2021 holiday schedule and also a resolution approving the 2021 commission meeting dates. Under risk management, we have a resolution to Catus, Catus USA for the occupational medical services. Under technology services, we have a resolution approving AT&amp;T wireless easement to run fiber and install a pole at the Henry County Senior Center located at Heritage Park to improve the signal quality. We also have a resolution approving the network hardware, infrastructure, switches, and routers that is under technology services. Under human services, we have a resolution approving and renewing the Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan Program for post-sixty-five age year retirees. Under transit, we have a resolution to apply for the FY twenty, for the Georgia Department of Transportation Rural Transportation Program operating in capital assistance for Henry County. Under stormwater, we have several, which includes a resolution bid award to BE equipment for the purchase of one cardboard baler for the recycling center. We have a resolution approving for a consultant to collect and update all stormwater infrastructure inventory in unincorporated Henry County. We have a resolution for the drainage redesign improvement services of Greenview Homes in Saratoga Woods subdivision, and a resolution approving for pipe replacements at Eagles Ridge subdivision. Under the SLOs, we've got several items. This, one is a resolution approving the right-of-way agreement between Henry County, the Georgia Department of Transportation for Walkway Road. There is a bid also for engineering, design services for East Lake Road widening, East Lake Road and Elliott Road, and East Lake Road and Rowan Drive and East Lake Road at Airline Road. There's a resolution for engineering design services for State Route eighty-one at Upchurch Road to American Engineers. There's a resolution for engineering design services for North Ola Road at Snapping Shoals Road to Falcon Designs in District Three. There's a resolution for engineering and design services for Airline Road at McGarry Road to American Engineers in District Three. And then there's a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Clayton County for cost sharing with respect to improvements to West Village Parkway in District Five. And then under the Department of Transportation, there's a resolution accepting ownership of various public roadways not on state highway systems. And then, again, there is a resolution approving for three pole barns, two for DOT, and one for the recycling center. So those are the items on the consent agenda. Are there any that, any of the commissioners wish to have to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Yes. Maybe they can answer this, or we can just move to C and D. I didn't see under stormwater. I'm assuming that C and D funds for those improvements for those particular subdivisions are coming out of stormwater's budget. But I do want to know where those subdivisions are and how we're going to make sure that if other subdivisions call us for issues, that we have the funds to make sure that all subdivisions are taken care of. So, I would like to move C and D.
Okay, well, we can pull those from the consent agenda then for discussion. And what we'll do, we'll move those to, if those are the questions, we'll move that right after the consent agenda approval. Okay, are there any others? Okay, with the notes of moving the stormwater items C and D off of these consent agenda for further discussion, the floor is now open to approve the consent agenda for all other items. Okay, I see a motion by Commissioner Holmes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clemmons. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, that is a unanimous agreement. Okay, if we can now come to those items of, under stormwater, to address the questions that Commissioner Clemmons just posed. And again, I think the question was, where are these subdivisions located as a start?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
These are drainage improvements. We have two subdivisions. The first is in District Three, which is C, and the Eagles Ridge subdivision is in District Four. And for the Eagles Ridge subdivision, we have a two-hundred thousand CDBG grant fund that we're going to use that in conjunction with stormwater utility, and all of the fundings come from the enterprise fund stormwater utility.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Clemmons, yes.
Do we have a method in how we're doing this? Because I know that there are other subdivisions that we've been working on, particularly Rum Ridge, which has a lake and has been having some issues with drainage problems. And I know that we've talked about it, and the issue was is that we couldn't do it, or we didn't have the funds to do it. So how are we going to do this when subdivisions have these issues? And how did this one get moved up and the other ones haven't?
So, Commissioner Clemmons, what our stormwater department does is they determine if it is a private issue or if it's on public or within the public right-of-way. It's my understanding that stormwater went out and determined that these were all issues that fall within the county's right-of-way, which is why we're having to make the necessary improvements. I know Rum, the one that you're referring to, has been around for some time, and we can certainly have Mr. Alex go back out and take a look at that subdivision. I don't think we've spoken with him about that one. But certainly, because residents do pay their stormwater fees, this would be an eligible expense if it is determined that it falls within the county's parameters for those improvements. So we can certainly look at that one again for you. But I think when we looked at Rum Creek, it was private property, and we can't do work within private property with our stormwater fees.
Well, we've done some work out there. We didn't do all of the work, and we didn't repair it. And of course, Alex was not on board. So I will give an opportunity for Alex to go back out there. But I will say that we're going to have to have some type of system when we're making improvements in subdivisions, because there are a lot of subdivisions in this county that need improvements. And if you do one, you need to be prepared to do all of them.
Absolutely.
So, and if it's CDBG funds, I see Shannon is there, we need to start looking at how do we do that, especially when it becomes a hazard, when it's issues like that.
I think Shannon's going to speak to the CDBG.
Commissioner, the purpose of the stormwater utility fee as enterprise fund The purpose of the Stormwater Utility Fee as Enterprise Fund is to remedy any drainage issues that, within the government agencies. Now, there are two conditions. If the, the issue at hand, if it affects the basin, let's say if the problem is outside the right-of-way, that falls under our Extended Level of Service. If it does affect the basin, that means if other entities and citizens who pay Stormwater Utility Fee, if they're affected, we'll look at that as a basin-wide. And then, at the end of the year, we'll report that to Georgia EPD as our proactive initiatives to meet the NPD, as the National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System requirements. Now, if a problem falls within a private entity, we'll be more than happy to provide technical engineering expertise. Now, again, if that problem is affecting the basin, then again, it is a case-specific. So, if there, if there is a concern, if you, please let us know which area will be more. All these subdivisions are first start with an inspection. We'll determine that if they fall within the boundaries of the Stormwater Utility coverage and then we'll remedy that, you know, but, yeah.
That answers the question. So, we'll get Alex on it and then we can go from there.
Just please let me know.
Okay.
Thank you. And just as a question, as a follow-up, don't we have a Stormwater Plan? Being discussed, but I knew that, you know, a year or so ago, there was a discussion about a countywide Stormwater, you know, strategy plan. So, in, in.
You know, all the municipalities, they are not required, but recommended for them to do a basin analysis for the whole county or the cities. And part of these will become as a, a new flood analysis to see how many homes in floodplain. Remember, in DeKalb County, we determined that there were twenty-thousand homes in floodplain. So, the Stormwater Utility Fee, we paid some of it to purchase the home at thirty percent or a hundred percent federal grants. And also, the initiative that we're doing as an infrastructure inventory, is one of the line items here, is as part of our asset management to determine all and locate all Stormwater infrastructures, inspection at the same time. Proactively, we'll find out what needs to be remedied. If it falls within a, a, a project, could be a capital project, it may go through different subdivisions and whatnot, then we're going to cover all of that. So, we are looking at this from different facets and be in pretty good shape right now.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to address, as it relates to Commissioner Clemmons' question in regards to the CDBG program. And please allow me to state that this particular location, this neighborhood, was presented a couple of years ago. It was presented, if not the twenty-eighteen, possibly the twenty-seventeen Annual Action Plan. It has been outstanding for this time due to a lack of additional funding as well as the background work from our Stormwater Department and getting to that point to carry out that activity. As you all are aware, activities brought before the CDBG program are brought based on these assessments as well as applications. And this particular one was brought to our attention several years ago by the commissioner of that district.
Great, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you and thank you for addressing the questions as well. Okay, so at this time, we'll go to those items. Again, it was Stormwater Item Number C regarding this resolution and we'll, again, open the floor now for a motion to approve. And this is the one for the drainage redesign of Greenwood Homes in Saratoga Woods subdivision. See a motion?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, that was unanimous. And then the other item was the resolution for pipe replacement at Eagles Ridge subdivision. So, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Barron. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, that is a unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move into the next item and we welcome up the county manager to present the resolution authorizing the installation of a memorial marker for fallen officer Michael Smith on Jonesboro Road.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. This morning, I am presenting a resolution to the board asking authorization to coordinate with the Georgia Department of Transportation to have a marker installed along Jonesboro Road for fallen officer Michael Smith. We do have this morning with us, Michael's mom, Sherry Smith, who's here with us, in the audience and several members of our Henry County Police Department as well. But as a reminder, on December twenty-eighth, Officer Michael Smith succumbed to his death as a result of an incident that occurred on December sixth at a dentist's office along Jonesboro Road. I will tell you that on December sixth, Officer Smith saved many lives and his priority was always to help others. He began his career with Henry County in twenty-eleven and he wore badge number five-five-six-zero. He served Henry County faithfully for seven years and he demonstrated a selfless and humble, humble spirit throughout his time here with the county. I'm seeking authorization this morning from the board for us to proceed with having a memorial marker prepared. And then we will have later this month, a actual unveiling of the marker in which we will have all of Michael's family present and we'll ask that the board is present as well. I also have here this morning Chief Eberman, who will offer a couple of words and certainly, if there's any comments that the board would like to make, I'll certainly yield for those comments as well. But I do want to personally thank Ms. Smith for allowing Michael to serve with us while here at Henry County.
Thank you.
Chief Eberman.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I just want to say in advance, thank you for your consideration for doing this memorial. It's very, while this is very important to the Smith family, it's also very important to the Police Department. We really appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize one of Henry County's finest that gave the ultimate sacrifice for the county. And this is, in my twenty-six years, the first time I've ever seen the county do this for a fallen employee. So, this is a really big deal and I want to say thank you on behalf of the Police Department for your consideration in accepting this resolution.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I personally just want to say thank you, Ms. Smith, for your son and also say that we want to thank his wife, and I know he's got two children, that we need to continue to keep in prayer. And I just ask that we just take a moment of silence just to honor, I know you mentioned that this occurred on December the, six and then, of course, he succumbed on December twenty-eighth. But if we'll just take a moment of silence just to continue to pray for the family, I sure would appreciate that. Thank you. So, at this time now, we're open a floor for the motion for approval of this resolution. Okay, so Commissioner Barron and Commissioner Holmes as a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Thank you, that was a unanimous decision. So, blessings to you, Ms. Smith, and also to his wife Erin and their family. And we thank you officers as well. Thank you for being here today to support. Continue to be safe, thank you. So, at this time now, we'll move into our next item, which is a Henry County Water and Sewer Authority Item and it's a resolution regarding the reaffirmation of the two-mill tax levy for water and sewer purposes in Henry County. So, at this time, we'll invite up presenters Andy Welch and company for the presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners, my name is Andy Welch, representing the Water Authority in this presentation before you. Tom Owens is here with me, Raymond James. We have a proposal for you. It's a refinance, the Water Authority is considering a refinance of the two-thousand-and-ten bonds to save about two-and-a-half million dollars for the ratepayers and taxpayers of Henry County. The resolution before you, however, is required for that refinance. This is just a reaffirmation to the subordinate lien holders that the two-mill tax will remain in place. This does not, is not tied to, to continuance to two-mill tax, it does not extend the two-mill tax. It simply is a reaffirmation of what Henry County Water Authority and the Board of Commissioners already agreed to in terms of its nineteen-eighty-four resolution. The, this of course, will of course not extend. The present date for the expiration of the last payment of the use of the two-mill tax is set for February first of twenty-thirty. That is the last payment under which we would need the two-mill tax to make the committed bond payments. This would be a retirement of existing bonds, the two-thousand-and-ten bonds and, and work a savings of two-and-a-half million dollars. Tom is here to talk to you a little bit about numbers. If you have specifics about the numbers pertaining to this particular issuance, we would ask your favorable consideration for this resolution and we will take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Clemmons?
What Authority talked about how they were going to use the two-million dollars that they're going to save?
We have a capital improvements plan and so it will be invested in capital improvements. There are significant new improvements that are coming along. In fact, in District Two, District Two, along the parallel connectors that the Water Authority is currently considering. So, these, this money will be actually reinvested in our capital improvements plan.
And I'll tell you, the reason I asked that, Attorney Welch, is because I want to see the capital improvement plan and I really want to see that you guys are going to take the money and invest it back into the county and how it's going to be done. Is the capital improvement plan available for the county to see? Have you guys done that part yet?
Yes, yes, it is available. We have it, I believe it's published online, Rodrick, and we also have a hard copy of that plan for you. Rodrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a nine-hundred-million-dollar plan over the, for the long-term. Rodrick Birch, Birch of the Water Authority, is integral in setting up that capital improvements plan with the board and can speak more directly to that point.
Y'all have already approved it?
We have approved one. We always do an update to it every year, is that right, Rodrick?
That's right. It's, we have a five-year, every fifth year, we have an engineering firm come in and do a complete review of the capital improvement plan. And, and the purpose of it really is determine as the county grows till we grow out, what's going to need to be put in place to accommodate that growth. So, right now, we're just finishing the fifth-year improvement plan by an engineering firm. But every year, our engineering department does a review to make sure we're, we're in time with what's currently going on. I believe you're going to see later on in your agenda, as I look in it, part of that capital improvement plan today because there's a capital improvement elements that are going to be approved today, the short-term work program. The Water Authority is part of that. So, for the next five years, I think you're going to see some of those improvements in your agenda today. One big improvement that coming, that is coming up is the expansion, for example, to the Walnut Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. That's already the engineering design, the environmental study has already started on that. That's going to be a six-million gallon per day and MGD expansion. And the price tag on that is somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-two million dollars. So, and, and I've told our board, I have to hold on to something when I say those numbers because it seems like everything we do is just, they're, they're big numbers to these wastewater treatment plant expansions and to water treatment plant expansions and building water tanks and extending sewerland water lines. So, so that's what it is. And, and yeah, those are available and we can certainly get, get you more information as far as our thirty-year build-out on the water and sewer, water and sewer capital improvement plan, if you would like.
And I'll tell you, you know, I, I hear you and I know you guys have done an amazing job with that, but there are some immediate needs which we've talked about. I know that my appointment has been advocating for the areas in our county that does not have the utilities that we need from the Water Authority Department. So, if we're saving two million, I just think, I wish that we have had conversations with the Water Authority other than just our board members going in. And I've had that conversation, but I don't know that every commissioner has had that opportunity to talk about those things. Nine million is a long ways from the two million and we don't know how you're going to allocate it. There are some areas that need water and sewer and lines as we build and develop. So, I think we need to really sit down with the Water Authority and talk about what the long-term plan is, what the short-term plan is. Especially since the county has got this two-mill that's, that's been an issue for some time. And I heard you say nineteen-eighty-four?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was the original bonds initiation with the county that was nineteen-eighty-four. So, it's been a while and that, and over the course of the last ten years, we've continually committed to refinance and work to pay off those bonds faster. And so, the, the last payment date on our current schedule is, is February twenty, twenty-thirty. Right. But there are, as, as the board has, launches into more and more SLOs projects to improve and, and build roadways throughout the county, that's going to open up and expand the corridors for improvement and development. And as that, as that occurs, it's incumbent upon the, the Water Authority to come in and make sure that we're providing adequate service to those areas. Otherwise, those areas will be underserved in terms of utilities. So, I think that part of our capital plan is to, is to examine where the Board of Commissioners is leading in terms of those road improvements and correspondingly, look at placing lines and lift stations and those kinds of things along the route to, to provide that service.
And I think our county manager has been trying to figure out, how do we look at the services and the fees that we pay to the Water Authority when we have improvements? Because even though, you know, it's two intergovernmental agencies, we're still paying you guys and we're still bonding or securing the bond as well. So, I think there's a lot of conversations that we need to have going into twenty-twenty-one about how do we improve those things.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holmes?
I agree with Commissioner Clemmons. I have not had any conversations with anybody regarding the, the capital improvement plan. So, you know, I don't know what your short-term plans are or long-term. So, I think it would probably be a good idea for us to, to schedule some time to meet with both boards to discuss, to go through the plan and, and see what direction you guys are going in before we move forward with this resolution.
I know that we have tried to have some joint meetings in the past, but we, we need to have those. Those are of critical importance for us to discuss. You are setting agendas and approving today SLOs projects which, which have that impact. So, I think that going forward, we need, we've been doing that in the past, we need to continue that. We've got to have those conversations. We are absolutely open to that. There are, there are projects that you as commissioners know that are integral to your districts that we do hear from your appointees on. So, we do get that communication. But it doesn't hurt at all to sit down and have more detailed conversations, to hear from you specifically and make sure that those communications are completely understood by us.
All right, Commissioner Thomas?
I listen that Commissioner Clemmons asked a lot of the same questions that I wanted to ask. And one of the things that has to have is this door communications because I too don't understand what you're actually doing. Now, one of the things I have done personally with the developments that are coming in District Four, I have opened a door and they have been coming to practically. Every meeting that I have, when I have a new development come forth, a representative from the Water Authority has been invited to the table. has been invited to the table. And I must admit, they have been there to talk about those particular areas of needs and concerns upfront. But when I saw this, the first thing I'm saying, we don't understand the capital improvement, we don't understand short-term, long-term goals. We need to know how we complement each other. We don't. I, I simply don't. We have almost allowed each other to operate in our own cocoons, really not talking like we should. And so that was my reason for wanting to table this, simply to say, let's have another conversation. We need you all present to us. Tell us what you want to do with this money. Tell us how it's going to be used for the benefit of the county. Of course, we want to save money, but that's easy to say, we're going to save money. It's easy to say, we've got a lot of projects coming. We want some specifics. So we really do need a meeting with you, and not just a, we're doing this for the county, we're saving money, this is good for the county. We need specific details as to how this money will be spent, and so that we can know what we're voting for. I don't want to just vote for it to say, okay, you guys, just go do what you want to do. I want to know, I'm voting for this because it will do A, B, C, D, F, G. So that's my reasoning for wanting to originally table this. And I do agree, before we go forth with this, no problem with supporting the Water Authority. Believe me, we need water, we need sewer. That's no problem. But we do need to have that door communications to know what it is we're voting for, so that we can also share that information with our constituents when they ask that question. So I would like to see that meeting take place. I really would.
I'd like to make a comment, and I don't know if someone else will. I, I, first of all, think that we need to move forward. Primarily, I understand that we've got to pay attention to the market, you know, bond. The second, a question I have is, on the capital improvement plan for the Water Authority, what was the vote by the Water Authority Board? They invest a lot of time, they've got a lot of expertise that is in partnership with the staff of the Water Authority. Do we remember the vote of what the Water Authority Board did on the capital plan that we're speaking about?
All those have been unanimous decisions. We are in the, right now, as Roger's saying, we're working through the next five-year plan. So Roger, do you want to speak to more of that?
Well, it's just the next five-year plan. We're really close to that. As a matter of fact, it's already been presented to staff. We're, we're getting close to being able, able to present it to our board as well. Let me say, though, the, the Water Authority, and I know from the members on our board that you appoint and from the general manager, that, that we are absolutely open and welcome a meeting with, with the Board of Commissioners at any time, and we can go through the capital improvement plan in detail, at any level of detail you want. So that would be a very welcome thing, and I think a needed thing that we could do.
So, just to answer my question, so the, the capital plan has not yet been approved by the Water Authority Board, is what you're saying?
We do five-year plans.
Okay.
Those five-year plans are approved by the board. The last one was approved unanimously. We're working on our fifth one to present.
That's what I was going to, too, because I, I will, again, agree that the joint meeting that we had not long ago was very informative. And you spoke highly about what was going to be. You gave an update of the capital improvement plan. You spoke about what was going on with the two-mill tax and that it will not extend past its current term. I do remember that. And, and I do agree that in 2021, I hope that there will be another conversation with both boards to continue that dialogue. In, in my opinion, I, if, this is a question I think I have, because to me, it would be great if we approved the refinancing of the bond. But based on the questions I'm hearing from the board, I don't know if you want to, again, modify the resolution to go ahead, and I don't know if you have to have the refinancing of the bond identified to capital projects before you can approve the refinancing, if that makes any sense. Can we refinance the bond without yet getting more input from this board to identify what capital projects are included in addition to the updates from your board?
Those are, this, this really is just a reaffirmation for the, the junior lien holders that the two-mill tax is going to, and the senior lien bondholders, that the two-mill tax will be in place, and that there's no alteration in that. So this is just a reaffirmation to them to give the existing bondholders that affirmation. That's all this resolution does. When we go to place the bonds, which we hope to place them to either later today, tomorrow, depending on the outcome of your decision today, the market is really good, and Tom can speak to that. The market is really good for getting a lower rate, and thus the savings on those refinancing those 2010 bonds.
Right, and just to clarify my question, can we refinance? Because, again, the questions are coming from the board. We want more information about how, you know, the savings are going to be used. Can we move forward with the resolution? And, and again, postpone that determination on how the fund is going to be used, or you have to have that associated?
No, they don't need to be associated. The, the resolution is, is separate from that. It's a financing resolution.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
But to, I think to the board member's point, in a, a meeting immediately, you know, as soon as possible, in terms of January, February, we need to schedule that meeting so that you can hear, Rodrick, and everybody can go through that plan. So you can see what we're considering. It hasn't been voted on, but the staff is working through that. The consultant's been hired. But you need to see that, you want to see that. We need to spell all that out to you so you can see exactly where, where the revenues in the Water Authority are being spent.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I think it's important that we clarify that this is purely a refinance. While there are savings, the choice is between keeping those monies within the authority or paying those monies out to investors outside of the county. So it's, regardless of where those savings ultimately get spent, without a refinance, we're just spending money and sending it out to investors who currently hold bonds at above-market interest rates. So I just want to be clear that, I, I do recognize those savings become funds of the authority and spent on capital projects. But without the refinance, there are no monies to spend, regardless of how we spend them. So I do think that's worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. We saw Commissioner Barm, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemens.
And I think, Andy, you answered pretty much all the questions and things I want to say. This, this is all about refinancing. This is all about saving money for the county as a whole. And we certainly need to move forward with that. I can't tell you how many times Lindy Farmer's reached out to me. He's been very persistent about wanting to have meetings with this board to discuss things about what's going on in this county, along with Jimmy Carter and the rest of the board, the Water Board. So I think we need to move forward with this as quick as possible. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Clemens?
And I just want to say, I was really concerned about the $2 million savings and how it was going to be spent. I think that some kind of way, the chair or somebody has gotten it all confused of what I was asking about. And I will say, where everybody's saying, this is fine, and this is something we should move on, I have other concerns that the Water Authority is familiar with. I have a concern when their restaurants and businesses shut down because they don't have sewer, and they don't have water, and they got a pump truck outside of a restaurant, and they're serving food. I have concerns. I have concerns when we're trying to bring a $200 million business into the county, and they can't come in because there's no sewer line. So I have a concern. These districts that don't have those concerns, and I think that the Water Authority may have been talking to the chair, but the chair or the chair-elect will not determine what happens with this board. And so it's very important that you talk to all the commissions, and especially the districts that are having economic development. So I want to make sure that, Andy, you knew exactly what my concern was about the $2 million, how are we going to use it? Because if I'm sitting down with the Water Authority Board, which I have come in and sat down about the projects
Yes.
that bring economic development, a project that's going to add $2 million to the county's board, not the Water Authority's board, and there was no money from the Water Authority to do the projects. So I'm concerned. And I'm concerned that we do need to have a conversation. We need to have a conversation about, how do we make sure that when we support the Water Authority, that the Water Authority is also in position to support the economic development and the opportunities that are going to come into this county that's going to increase our budget so that when we need to add 30 more officers, that we can do it? So that's my concern. I mean, I think you know that, but I just wanted to clarify that. This is not something we need to rush through. This is a conversation that needs to happen. And I don't want to get it confused with whether the Water Authority is doing a good job. I have some very legitimate concerns about businesses that don't have services, and there's a public health crisis in this county right now, because the Water Authority needs to move on a project. And if it's money that the Water Authority needs, I want to know that this $2 million that's coming in is going to rectify this problem.
I think those are, I know those projects you're speaking of, and those are important projects to the Water Authority, and they are, we're right now doing everything that we are empowered by law to do.
Okay.
And we're going to continue that. That's, that's, that's our commitment. I believe that, I, I know that the commissioners met with leadership, Lindy and others at the Water Authority, expressed her concerns to them regarding those important economic projects that are in your district. Those are being heard, and engineering designs are being put together to facilitate that in the most cost-effective and time, time-effective manner.
And time-effective is key. I hear board members up here talking about, this is, time is of the essence, time of the essence. Well, public health is of the essence.
Yes.
And there are other issues that are time of the essence. And when you don't move fast for things that I think that affects public health, I don't think we need to move fast on anything else. So, you know, I just want to be clear. Maybe the board needs to be more in tune and, and find out, you know, what's going on in the other districts. But that's where I was coming from with the $2 million. How can we use that $2 million to make sure that we get some things done in the county?
This, when we say savings, what we, what we're really talking about is, is, as Tom has said earlier, it's, it is a reapplication of those funds, whether we're spending it, giving it to bondholders to pay them interest, or we're spending on projects here.
Right.
And if you authorize a resolution, then we can go capture that money and spend it here in Henry County as opposed to it going to investors.
And that's what I want to know. Can you get that to me and tell us how you're going to spend it?
Now, he's exactly what, we're going to sit down with you and sit on that capital plan, so you have an input, all of you, from Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Barm, Commissioner Thomas, Chairwoman Wood, and Chair-elect Orell. We want you all to have that input in this process. We need to hear from you, in particular, what those projects and priorities are in your districts that will help us shape the comprehensive plan.
And I think it's, one more thing, Chair Wood, I think it's a difference in spending money in projects that are residential projects that don't bring economic development, and spending money in projects that are economic development projects.
And improve the tax base.
Exactly. When you, when you, when you have to look at, you know, do I spend the sewer over here to bring businesses, or do I spend it over here in a private developer who wants to build some houses? That's two very different types of spending. And I think that those conversations, I know, have been happening from my appointee. But this whole board needs to get on board with, with how that happens.
Okay, and are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
When is the expiration of this bond? You probably, you probably said it earlier.
Which, this one here for 2010? It's 2027?
February 1, 2026.
So we're talking about the $2 million is going to be saved in the next six years, not like we're going to be saving it tomorrow. So we've got six years to get this figured out, right?
Well, no, sir, the, the bonds, the existing bonds are currently outstanding at a rate of 5%. So every day they're outstanding, 5% interest accrues on almost $25.5 million.
Right, but this money's going to be saved in the next six years.
Yes, sir. The refinance would lower that rate to approximately 1%.
Right.
So every day that we have the refinance in place, as opposed to the old one, we're saving about 4% on $25 million. Over that period of, of five and a little more years, you would save, but now it's over $2.8 million.
Right, so it, I just didn't want people to misinterpret that we're not going to be saving $2 million next week.
That's correct. You're not going to pocket $2 million on day one.
That's correct.
And which will be plugged into the capital improvement plan that y'all are now reviewing. But saying that, I, in four years I've been on this board, I've had good communication with my, my appointment and all the staff there. So they've answered all the questions. And anytime I have any concerns about any areas of the county, they've been open to answer all my questions, providing a document. So I just want to, I want to say that as well. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to say that we are scheduled to have another meeting in December. And we have time between now and that meeting, the VOC meeting, to have a further discussion. And I, there are some concerns. And I think it would be advantageous to the Water Authority and this committee to meet before their next meeting and bring this resolution back for a vote. We just want to make sure we have the information that's needed.
We have a scheduled bond hearing before the judge, bond validation hearing from Monday, the 7th. the 7th. So that would be next Monday. That is on the court docket between the state and the water authority. In order for us to move forward, we would need this resolution in order to do that. I don't think there's any lack of commitment on the part of the authority to have as many meetings as you need in order to make sure that your input is known in the capital plan. Roger, is there any comments?
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Andy, it may be a good start if you guys can email out copies of the capital improvement plan.
Yes, sir.
So we can get a good idea of the direction that the water authority is heading.
Yes, Roger, can we get that emailed out?
Yes, we can. I think we're at the point to where we could probably email out the new study of the capital improvement plan. And I say new study, it's not like it's starting over from scratch. It's an update of the capital improvement plan, but it's a fresh look every five years or so. We have the list of projects, and I believe we're at the point now to where even though they're not yet, the new one is not yet approved, it really incorporates a lot of the projects that have been in place for, you know, the last number of years. So I think we're at a point where we could go ahead and email that out as well. Just know that it's not official yet, not that plan.
That would be my interest. I'm interested in seeing where the new investments will be in this county.
Right.
Very much so.
Okay. Commissioner Clements?
And I would say that when we're looking at those plans, I know that the water authority looks at, you know, a really large picture and a long-term picture. There are some opportunity, economic development opportunities that I have not seen on the past capital improvement plans. There you'll have like, there's not been major investments unless it's like in the industrial area, where we'll put infrastructure in the industrial area for the warehouses and those things that bring economic development on that end from our state Department of Economic Development. But there are some other areas that are growing with other types of economic development that we need to make sure that we're looking at that's on the capital improvement plan. Some of these major Thor fairs that we need to look at, like the Western Parallel Connector, or like the major corridors coming off of our interchanges, other than the ones that are down in the industrial area. I know that there's quite a few that's happening up in the Fairview area. So, you know, the capital improvement plan, I know when you send it to us, I know it's going to be that big picture of the basins and the plants. But make sure that there's something on there from economic development that's going to benefit the county's budget, because that's our responsibility.
Yeah, I think we would welcome any input you have in that regard. Of course, knowing at the same time, every new project comes with a price tag.
Right.
So it's $900 million now. So, you know, and there's trade-offs. But we'd certainly welcome your input.
Prioritization is important.
And I'll say that to the board, that the conversation that I've had, when we've talked about the new economic development projects that are coming up, the water authority has identified that they already have a plan. They have a plan with the $900 million. And there's not much room for expansion of dollars to bring in these other projects that'll just pop up in the county. But from a board perspective, we have to look at how do we improve our budget so that we don't have to raise taxes on citizens? So it is our responsibility as county commissioners to go out and, because we don't have an economic development department, to find projects to bring into our county so that we can increase our budget from, you know, up $5, $10 million, so that we don't have to go to our citizens for more money when we need to increase services in the county. So that's my responsibility, you know, for the next four years. That's my goal, is to make sure that we're attracting businesses in our county that's going to reduce taxpayers' burdens. And so we're going to need the water authority to add something on the capital improvement plan that's going to help us with that. And I know you guys hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, now, the floor is open for a motion regarding this item.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barham.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson, all in favor. Okay, any opposed? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. All right. So now we'll move into our next item, which is under planning and zoning. And the first one is for information only. And this is a presentation by Mr. Kirk, our planning and zoning director. And this is information only again regarding an impact fee study. So thank you, Mr. Kirk, and welcome this morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. So Henry County is looking to update the existing impact fee schedule. And the update will also include transportation. And the last time that this was updated was in 2003, when it was implemented. Today, we have Mr. Bill Ross with Ross and Associates that will give us a brief overview and outline of the program.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ross.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am the infamous Bill Ross, as you just heard, with Ross Associates. And I am personally doing your impact fee study. I'm not just the figurehead. I'm actually doing it. You will see me in many meetings in the future. This is just kind of an introduction to what are we doing and how long is this going to take? And, uh-huh. These are the categories we're looking at. Now, impact fees are collected to build new facilities or buy new vehicles, because impact fees are based on what's called a level of service. Right now, you have a certain number of tennis courts. The level of service is how much of a tennis court serves a housing unit, for instance. And then we say, okay, how many more housing units are we going to have, times that level of service? And I can tell you how many tennis courts you're going to need over the next 20 years. We're going out to 2040 with this. The study won't tell you where to put those tennis courts. I just quantify how many you're going to need. It's really up to the departments and the plans that you adopt for recreation, for fire, for police, et cetera, as far as where these new facilities, expanded buildings, will be located. So these are all of the categories we're looking at, which are almost all of the impact fee eligible categories in the state law. There's a state law that controls this whole process. And that's the main thing we have to be aware of, that there are constraints and there are opportunities with regard to that in the state law. So I'm just going to talk about what are we doing? And how long is this going to take? There are basically three elements in the impact fee study. The most important, and the first, is the so-called methodology report. That's just our name for it. But the methodology report has everything in it. All of the calculations, all of the projects, all of the level of service standards, et cetera, that lead us to ultimately the maximum impact fees. I calculate in the methodology report, what's the maximum you could charge for parks and recreation, for fire improvements, et cetera. I do the maximum because the state law says you can't charge too much. So you need to know what's too much. And that would be more than the maximum. You can charge less. Many jurisdictions actually do charge less than the maximum. Many others do charge the maximum. So that's strictly up to you. And we will get to that issue when we draft the ordinance. Because the impact fee ordinance will include the fee schedule you want to adopt. So as we work on the draft ordinance, we'll be talking about what do you want to charge in impact fees. Meanwhile, you see the capital improvements element, the CIE on the right-hand side. This is a state requirement. DCA, Department of Community Affairs, has rules and regulations about these capital improvements elements. The need for a capital improvement element is in the state law, but it's not defined in the state law. That's where DCA comes in as far as what goes in there. Most of what goes into the capital improvements element is drawn from the methodology report. The CIE does not include the fee calculations. DCA doesn't care about what the fees are. But they are interested mostly in what are the projects that are being proposed for funding. And that goes into the regional and ARC review process. It takes them two months to read this. I don't know why. They can approve an entire comprehensive plan in the same two months. But anyway, that's a two-month process. So while they're looking at the CIE, that's when we'll be drafting the ordinance and getting the county ready to start collecting the impact fees. So when we get to the end of all of this, you'll be adopting the fee schedule as part of that ordinance. And when we get the go-ahead from DCA, you will adopt the CIE as an amendment to your comprehensive plan. And if everything works, it'll all come together at the same time, at the end of the process. Time frame, we're looking at this process moving out to sometime in June. There are some ways in which we can save time in this process. So adopting everything, the CIE and the impact fee ordinance, this would be no later than June. And if we can accelerate it, we certainly will. But we're still over here in December. The little red star there is this meeting right now. So we've been working on the methodology report. We're collecting inventory information from all of the departments that are involved in those categories. And we're pulling together all of the data we need. We've made growth projections that the staff has under review. Over the next 20 years, what do we really expect in terms of new population, new housing units, new businesses, employment data? Because those calculations go into how much are we going to need in the way of new improvements? And therefore, how much is it going to cost to do that? So we expect to have that methodology report completed by next month, January. And from there, we'll meet with you to go over the methodology report and input into it, any comments you have or changes you need or whatever, to finalize that. And then, because we pulled the CIE out of that report, then it doesn't take very long to do the CIE. We can get that done in less than a month, really. But when the CIE is ready, you'll need to have a public hearing with public notice that to approve a resolution, to submit this thing to ARC, and ARC sends it to DCA for review. So that's your first public hearing that would be, you know, advertised, et cetera. And folks are certainly welcome to come and express their opinions and whatever. While that's going on, we get into the impact fee program itself. We'll be looking at the ordinance on this schedule. That would be going on in March. And importantly, talking to you about what do you really want to charge in terms of impact fees, maximum or something less? And there's a lot, a lot of variability there. I've got a whole little spreadsheet program, and we can plug in all kinds of numbers as you would like to see what happens. Also during that state review process, we look at implementation. We have a computer program that we can install so that the building permit clerks, when they calculate the building permit fee for new construction, they can also calculate the impact fee. And the builder would pay both fees at the same time. There are ways to delay the payment of the impact fee, but you always want to get it at least before a CO is issued. Otherwise, CO goes out, house is sold, they're gone. But that's a possibility, and that would be in the ordinance itself, if you want to do that. We'll have an operations manual and a procedures manual so that staff will know. There's got to be an appeals process. Well, how do we do that? Special assessment process, how do we do that? And this has step-by-step directions on how to handle those kinds of issues. So this manual can be handed down as new personnel show up, and the procedures are all there. It's mostly drawn, of course, from the ordinance itself, because the ordinance has all these procedures in it. And of course, we'll do training sessions with the staff to be sure everybody knows how it works, you know, what my phone number is, because I never go away. Once I have an impact fee client, my access by telephone is free and easy. So I'm always there as a resource. So that is pretty much how long this is going to take and what all the steps are. And one thing I generally recommend, and you'll hear me say this again in future meetings, when the methodology report is complete, it'll come to you for information. And you may wish to receive it as information. But I generally recommend you don't adopt it, because that maximum fee schedule is in the methodology report. And if you adopt it, some folks are going to interpret you just adopted the impact fees. And of course, you will not have. But you'll have all of that, and we'll have briefings on the methodology report as it's completed, because it's not completed until you see it and ask questions and have thoughts that I need to put into that report. So that is the grand total of what we're doing and how long it's going to take. If you have any questions at all, that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Ross, for that presentation. So we'll open up the floor for any questions or comments from the board. Commissioner Clements, and then I've got one as well.
Sherri, I know we talked about the impact fees and the method in which the county was using the impact fees now. And there were other ways that we could use the impact fees. But the way our resolution was set up, we weren't able to use the impact fees in that manner. Talk a little bit about how, right now, presently, our impact fees are being used. Also, I have asked the question over and over that impact fees that are collected in districts, why is it not kept in those districts to improve the parks, the roads, and the infrastructures in those districts? And I think the response again was the way our resolution is set up or the way our impact fees are set up. So I want to talk about, is this company was supposed to come in and do that? Because everything that Ross and Associates is doing, I thought that's what the staff was doing. So I'm a little confused about what's happening with, what's happening now. Also, we talked about impact fees on certain types of businesses being increased, warehousing, transportation, trucking, those kind of businesses. So, you know, is this what this is about? I just don't, I never heard of this, and I didn't know we were doing this, so.
Yes, ma'am. And so if you'll remember, Commissioner Clements, there was a lot of conversation regarding specifically industrial development and the impact that it was having on our infrastructure.
Right.
And our current impact fee ordinance only allows for us to collect impact fees for certain uses, for parks, libraries, public safety. I believe there is one for PD, green space, and then administrative costs. I may have left something off. And it did not allow for us to include transportation as an eligible use. And so what Mr. Ross and his team will do is now they are considering that, because that is the directive that the board asks. Let's come back and look at how do we impose a fee for those industrial buildings, regardless of where they're located, specifically in the unincorporated areas, that we can collect and at least put that towards infrastructure improvements. So that was the first part of how we started with Mr. Ross. Now, the second part is, if you'll recall, when we were going through the service delivery strategy conversations, a lot of the concerns raised by the boards particularly was the number of industrial developments that were falling within the city limits, having an impact on county infrastructure, but with no fees being attached to them. And also specifically improvements within parks without the cities contributing anything to that. And so what the cities agreed to is specifically for parks, that once the county approved an impact fee ordinance, they would adopt something similar. And on joint projects with the county, those impact fees that they collect would also go towards the county. Now, what you've asked for is for us to have the ability to incorporate transportation as an eligible fee for us to collect. And so that's one of the things that Mr. Ross will do. But it's also going to give us the cost of what we should be charging, because we haven't updated our impact fee ordinance since its original, when it was first created. And I can't remember how many years ago it was, but it's been, oh, four, 2004. And so we've collected the same dollar amount since 2004. What Mr. Ross will do is give us the maximum dollar amount that we can collect for impact fees for those particular services. Now, what the board can do with that point is determine of the eligible, and I'm going to call them activities, if we want to put a certain dollar amount towards transportation, it can go towards transportation. If we want to focus just on transportation, parks, and public safety, it can be transportation, parks, and public safety. We get to determine which categories receive those funds. So what you've asked for is exactly what they're doing. And it's just been, it's been some time to get it done, because it does take a lot of work for them to pull together where we are, what we've collected, how our fees are collected. And there's a lot of departments that are involved in that process.
Right. But how are impact fees being used now? And I know that, because I think that our impact fees now, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, you guys are taking the impact fees and putting it in our budget.
No. So we utilize our impact fees currently. There are only certain categories that we can use it for. So we, all of the impact fees that are collected are collected through the building department. The building department separates the percentage out that goes to each respective unit. So the library, they receive a monthly impact, I think it's monthly, David, monthly, that we pay to the library based on the amount that we've collected. We also have parks. So any improvements within your parks, those impact fees that are collected go back into that respective group. Now, the other question that you asked, and I asked the same question of Mr. Ross, and I'm going to defer to him in terms of the impact fees that are collected, do they stay within the district in which they're collected? Because I had the exact same question, because it's come up a couple of times.
And I ask you that because you said that the impact fees goes to parks. But I know that several of us have sat and said, hey, we need improvements to our parks, and there's no budget. So I believe that the monies from the impact fees is going to the park's budget. And when it goes to the park's budget, it's not necessarily going to the parks. Is it being used for park staff? Is it their whole park's budget?
No, no, no.
So we need to correct that and look at that.
No, it's absolutely not, because you can only use impact.
Where's the money going?
It can only be for new projects. So it can't be for improvements. It has to be a new project.
Okay.
Yes, it has to be a new project.
Your playground, we talked about it last time in our capital, we met one-on-one, I think it actually resumed a few months ago. The new playground projects can be used for that. JP's working on getting that moved. But Sherri mentioned it's got to be new projects, not maintenance.
No operation.
Not operational, can't pay salaries, stuff like that.
So that-
But when we talked about the playground, y'all said we had to wait on capital improvement plan to get the playground. So-
Because, Commissioner, the type of playground that you want, we don't have enough of impact fees to do that. Because realize, the amount that the building department is collecting, 100% of that doesn't go to parks. It's divvied up. So a percentage goes to public safety, a percentage goes to the library, a percentage goes to green space. So once that dollar amount is divvied up, there's a small portion that's left that then goes into your impact fees for parks. And so what we've done is we've included, we want to make sure that we include the parks in the capital, so that if we do have a shortfall, you're not having to wait for impact fees to come in. So it's just another funding source for us to utilize.
So, Mr. Ross, I'm having this conversation, because as you're doing your study, we don't want to happen what just happened with the water authority, that you come up here and you present to us, and you don't even know what the issues are with the commissioners that have requested that something happens with the capital, with the impact fees, or how it's being divvied up, or how it's being used, or what the issues are, or why we requested that we have an impact study update done. So I think that it was important that you hear that we've got some issues with impact fees respective to how it's separated out throughout the county. I know that we're having a conversation with the school system now. So in my district, we've had close to 3,000 building permits or homes, residents, or businesses that happened in that district. But there are no visible impact fees being spent. Maybe it's in police, or maybe it's somewhere else. So we need to talk about, what does it look like when we collect those impact fees? And how do we see the impact fees going back to improve in those areas in which they're being collected?
So, Commissioner Clements, we provide the board with- An impact fee report, because we do it every month. And I want to remind the board that the board approved a resolution to split impact fees five ways. And so when you split it five ways, you don't have a lot that's going to come- And so when you split it five ways, you don't have a lot that's going to come to you because it's being split by each district. One of the things that we've really tried to push, and specifically, if you'll remember, the Parks Master Plan. The purpose of us developing that plan, or at least wanting to develop that plan so that we could identify what our new projects needed to consist of. And so that's one of the things that we're going to continue to work with the board on. But because we're having to split it five ways, once we get that amount, once it's divvied up, it's not a lot to move forward with. And I don't want to say it's not a lot because it is a lot of money. But once you split it five ways, and then you have to split it to divvy up green space, libraries, and all the other categories that it goes to, then you are down to a smaller amount when you're talking about big projects. But we are working diligently, specifically, and if you remember in Brad's presentation this morning, he mentioned a host of capital parks projects that are in progress. And so you'll start seeing some projects moving specifically with capital funding. And if we do have impact fees that are available, then those impact fees will be used for those projects.
Okay.
And Commissioner, if I add, one of the things you mentioned is the current impact fee ordinance that was adopted in 2000, actually late 2003, treats the county as one big service area. The impact fee law absolutely allows, in fact, I would say it suggests that you should, break that down into smaller service areas. Now, I'll warn the board, if Mr. Ross does his thing and looks at service areas based on where services should be made with respect to a particular new improvement, there's a pretty good chance they won't correspond with district lines.
I agree.
So, you know, it's a matter of complexity. How complex do we want Mr. Ross's studies to be? Because in theory as well, you could have a different service area for different services. You could have a recreation service area, you could have a transportation service area, you could have an animal control service area. So I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that Mr. Ross probably needs instructions from us as to how do we, do we want service areas? If so, do we want one service area for all services? Do we want them broken up into different services? And that's the, that's one of the things that the development fee law allows us to do. And frankly, we probably should be doing service areas. You don't necessarily, the idea of impact fees is to capture exactly what it says, capture the impact from new development. Now, a new development on the southernmost tip of the county doesn't necessarily impact parks and recreation services on the northernmost tip of the county. It may, there may be some impact, but chances are those impacts are even more localized than countywide. So I think that's something that staff and Mr. Ross are going to have to work on to decide conceptually how should that be presented.
And I think that's what we talked about. If you collect impact fees, maybe public safety service area is countywide. Maybe transportation may be or may not be countywide. But then when it comes down to parks and rec, if you've got a big impact and a lot of fees being collected in one area, and that area is not really impacted based on the new people that are coming in that area because you had to split it five ways, that's an issue. So I'm hoping that January, this is something that we can get worked out. You know, we'll have a different board and we'll have a different mindset. But it's not fair because I know that for three years, we've not had anything because there's not been enough money. But the parks that have been getting money for years and years and years have always improved. And I know that District Two hasn't had any improvements. So we've got, and then District Two is the district that is collecting the most impact fees. And it's not, we've got to look at the right way to do it when we talk about servicing deliveries.
The good way to do it is to look at the facilities and where you're putting them.
And the money that's collected from those areas.
The money, quite often, you're going to be collecting money in one district, a whole lot more money because that's where more houses are getting built, more businesses are moving, compared to another district.
Right.
Now, does that mean that the one that's, the one you're collecting lots of fees in gets all of the parks? You know, all of the tennis courts? Or do you want to move them around? And that's where the planning comes in from the planning department. What is your parks and recreation plan, say? And where does it say that these facilities need to be? If you try to split the money up itself among the districts, there's going to, it's not going to relate to growth, it's just going to relate to the districts. But if I tell you you need 12 more tennis courts, the question is, for you, where are you going to put them? And that's how you equalize, if you will, the expenditure of the money by putting the facilities that are needed among the five districts in meeting that need. I can tell you how many tennis courts you're going to need. You're the ones who decide, well, where are we going to put them? And therefore spend the money to put them in the various districts. You may recall, I don't know how many of you have been on the board for quite a while. The county got itself sideways with the state when it came to their attention that you were splitting the money up on the basis of districts as opposed to putting the facilities, splitting the facilities up among the districts. And I think that, I wasn't involved and I wasn't that close to it, but in talking to DCA years ago about the situation, I knew that they held up your qualified governmental approval for a while. So we want to avoid that, but at the same time, the key to it is where are we going to put the facilities and move them around and place them in the districts where they need to be? So you're looking at, you're allocating the money by virtue of allocating the facilities that you're going to build and where those facilities are going to be. So it's kind of a backdoor approach to equalizing the facilities by the districts. The, if I did individual service area plans, the district that has the most tennis courts are going to have the greatest need for even more tennis courts versus another one where growth may be going on and they have no tennis courts at all. So it's very difficult to do individual service areas like that. Now, we just did service areas down in Glen County between St. Simon's and the mainland. And that was easy to do because the facility served those two areas specifically, given the fact that there's a long, long causeway in between them. But by and large, you need to be looking at your plans. You need to be looking at where are those road improvements going to be? Where are the parks and recreation facilities going to be? Where are the green space areas that you want to buy? That allocates the money by virtue of allocating the improvements themselves, so. We'll certainly work with you on all of this. I understand the desire.
Okay, I had a question and then I'll come to Commissioner Thomas. So looking at, and this may be more directed to the county manager, is this timeline going to be pretty good considering you would want to be able to factor in your revenue projections in the next year's budget approval? Meaning that if the fees go up or down, or however they change, is this timeline good for the budget process in your opinion to make sure it's included in the revenue projections?
Absolutely, because I think it's with the amount of growth that we have going on in the county and how those permits, and specifically, the impact fees are collected at the permit phase. So I definitely think when we start looking at revenue projections as we start building the budget specifically for the building department, we'll take into consideration the amount of growth that has occurred in the county. And definitely, this will, this shouldn't have any, nothing else, it'll be a positive effect because obviously the impact fee number is going to go up based on what we've previously collected versus what we're looking at now. So I definitely don't foresee it being too late in the ballgame as we start preparing for it. And our budget team continues to monitor it that monthly. We're looking at how we're trending. I mean, now specifically because of what's going on with COVID, we're really having to look at our revenue numbers and how we've been collecting. But the building department is continuing to collect at a much higher rate than what we've projected already.
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then Commissioner Barron.
Okay.
My question is, and you mentioned, one of you did, about the cities and how this impacted cities.
How do you do your study for the county not knowing what commitments are coming from the city? If the city has committed to building a new park, or if the city have committed to some other green space and we are not aware of it, and you give us one overlay of telling us what we need, how are you going to decipher between what we're supposed to be investing in not knowing and having done a complete study for the cities themselves?
Well, we do use countywide plans. You have a countywide transportation plan that includes all of the cities. You do not have authority to collect impact fees in those cities. And that's what the city manager's talking about, of having cooperation agreements with some of these cities. We'll take transportation as an example. We're going to be looking countywide at the transportation plan. And of all of those projects, in the growth that's projected in the county, unincorporated area, and all the cities, what's the unincorporated area's share of the cost of those projects? And that's based on, of course, trips on the road and, you know, demand for transportation. Then, if we want to, if a city agrees to collect the impact fee, they'll be paying their, quote, "fair share," and you'll be getting more money into transportation than just from the unincorporated area, so.
So your study will include requirements of the city as well?
Well, using.
And then we're going to, I'm trying to see how this is going to work because if we're paying you to do a study for the county, there are things that the city is now doing that should impact your study, be it a transportation, be it a park, be it a development. So if you're advising us to buy green space in a certain place and the city bought a park right next to it, we're trying to see now, how is this study going to make sense to me? And I can't see it. That's what I'm trying to see. What are we going to do? Are we going to then build the city for what we determined this study has stated should happen?
So Commissioner Thomas, let me see if I can clean it up for you because I made the comment regarding the impact regarding specifically the cities. I am only referring to parks that the county currently maintains that are within the city limits. We have had issues with the cities, and I don't want to say issues, but we've had some concerns with the amount of monies that are spent either by the county or the city as it pertains to improvements within a respective city park. And so we have a number, and I don't think Stockbridge has any. It may be just McDonough and Locust Grove. McDonough and Locust Grove have parks that are within the municipal boundaries of their city, yet the county maintains and operates those particular parks. And what we've asked the cities to do is to not be so dependent on the county to pay for those improvements if they need them, but to help contribute to necessary improvements. And so all this will do is give us the dollar amount that we'll be able to collect for parks, and then the city will adopt something similar because they'll have to adopt their own impact fee ordinance as well. We can't collect for the city, we can't force them to do it. But this is going to be a part of the service delivery strategy, that they will agree to also collect an impact fee for the parks in which the county maintains that fall within the city limits. If you'll remember, we had a meeting with all of the cities and we, this is not what staff preferred. Our preference was for parks that are within the city limits, the cities need to maintain. But the board decided, hey, we want to continue maintaining and operating these parks. And so that was the wishes of the board. And so this is what we've been able to come up with that will benefit both the city and the county. Because what we're doing is we're taking our county resources, maintaining and operating these parks that fall within city limits. And we're just trying to figure out another funding mechanism outside of general fund that we can utilize for new improvements to these parks that fall within those city limits. So that is, that is the degree of what we're doing for impact fees. Now, the city of Locust.
Well, excuse me, so why would we ask the city to also adopt their own impact fees?
Well, that's what we're, once we have the impact fee ordinance approved, that is what the cities will have to do because they're going to, they're going to need their impact fees to help pay for those improvements. Now, some cities already have impact fees that they're collecting. Like the city of Locust Grove, they have a transportation impact fee that they collect for city projects. So the cities certainly have the ability to collect their own impact fees, but this is merely for us to be able to identify another funding source for projects that, again, fall within the city limits and new improvements at those parks.
Okay.
So I want to add to the confusion. I hope what I'm about to point out helps. You have a capital improvement element as part of your comprehensive plan. This is, that's where this starts. The purpose of development impact fees is to fund those capital improvements listed in the capital improvement element portion of your comprehensive plan. So unlike SPOST, you know, when you adopt a SPOST, you adopt the SPOST and you adopt specific projects to be funded by SPOST. Impact fees don't work that way. The way impact fees work is, is you say, these are the capital improvements the county needs over the next ever how many years. And in order to construct these capital improvements, that's going to cost this much money. And every new development that comes in, whether it's residential, contribute, you know, the portion of that cost that's attributable to residents is that much. And if we're going to add commercial warehousing, you know, you'll calculate that much. But the idea is to fund those projects that you've already identified that you will need. And Mr. Ross's study is going to look at the projects that we need. He's going to help identify the projects we need, and then they're sort of paced. How, when do you need them based on new growth? And that way you know how to finance them and how to build them. So I think a lot of the questions that are being asked kind of assume that we're going to have money and then decide how to spend it. But the truth of it is, it's kind of the reverse. You're deciding how to spend it with your capital improvements element. And then your development impact fee is money specifically earmarked for those capital improvements. That's a broad generalization, but that's why you see throughout Mr. Ross's presentation, sprinkled throughout it, you see where he'll update the comprehensive, the capital improvement plan. And you also see toward the end, well, we'll re-adopt or we'll adopt the new comprehensive improvement element. In fact, the next item on your agenda is the annual update. And if you read that annual update, it talks about how the reason we're doing the annual update is to satisfy the requirements of the Development Impact Fee Act. So they really work together, they're really knitted together. You can't have development impact fees without the capital improvements element of your comprehensive plan. So I would urge you to think of it that way. It's not that we're going to go out and identify new projects every time we get a dollar in. It's really, you're going to know what projects you need. And then you'll decide when to fund them and maybe where to ultimately place them based on your impact fee revenue.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Barron.
Yes, Sherri, I know we talked about the cities and the parks, but my question is, is the cities continue to annex into the county, annex more property, and when they build a development and it actually impacts our road, are we going to be able to charge those individuals lots for some type of impact fees? Or how do we recruit some of that money because they are impacting Iowa county roads?
No, sir. Unfortunately, we will not because we don't issue the building permits. And that's where you capture the impact fee. What we're hoping, and that's one of the things that we are, we are about 99% complete with SDS, but roads is the issue. And that's one thing that we haven't been able to come to an agreement on in terms of how do we capture the impact that all residents are having on county and/or city roads? So to answer your question, no, sir, we will not. So if City X decides that they're going to annex, you know, 10,000 new acres, although I don't think it'll be 10,000, I just throw that number out, the only group that will benefit will be the city who collects that impact fee. So in the instance of, and I hate to keep picking on Locust Grove, but I know that they have a transportation impact fee. They will collect the transportation impact fee, but those funds are not sent over or forwarded to the county. It's put back into, I guess, their funds for their necessary improvements within their municipality.
All right, and just a comment, Commissioner Barron. This is why I think it's been good to support what I know Commissioner Thomas has been talking about. We need to, if any ways, try to influence any annexation laws, if at possible. I know it's been a challenge, and I've been told that it would be a big challenge, but that, again, is an opportunity when you talk about annexation laws that need to be revised. So just a note. Okay, anything else? Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry.
Patrick, you mentioned back in 2003.
Patrick, you mentioned back in 2003 that they adopted this ordinance. So, in the original ordinance, did it state that all the impact fees that we collect are to be divided by five?
No, no. The, the impact fees were all put into one bucket, and they were divided by project, basically. No, that, you, you had a single countywide district. It did not matter what district, what commission district the funds came from, had no relevance on where those funds were paid.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then, yeah, and since then, the board adopted a resolution to say, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we separate them out into districts.
Yeah. I think we did that for the Parks and Recs in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
We divided that by five, but-
Yeah. And, and I, and I, you know, that's not, that's not the way you should do it. You know, I think-
I understand. It's the impact area that where you collect you.
Or just impact the services, period.
I understand.
You know, if, if, what you need is, like Mr. Ross said, if you need new tennis courts, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't, it may not make sense. It might. I don't know. But I, I think the question is, does it make sense to put tennis courts where there are no tennis courts? Or does it make more sense to put tennis courts where there's already a demand for tennis courts? You know, do you create a demand by placing tennis courts somewhere where they aren't? Or do you serve the tennis-playing community by leaving the tennis courts where they are? You know, same, you could, you could make that same argument with everything. There's soccer fields, maybe, and I think the county does have something of a soccer complex. If you need more soccer fields, does it make more sense to expand that complex or to sprinkle the fields out all over the county? And that's a decision that, you know, the board has to make, really on a, on a project-by-project basis. But to tie yourselves to the lines drawn on, on paper for your commission districts is tying yourself to a, a pure fiction, because those, those districts were drawn to, as best as you can, distribute the population equally among the districts, satisfy the Voting Rights Act, and for a million other reasons that have no practical impact for how the county functions on a day-to-day basis. So-
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes. As I recall, back when we changed this to split it amongst the districts, Commissioner Clement led the charge on that, and I thought it was a very fair way to do it, because we all need projects in our districts, and we all represent all the districts. But my question is, it's been since 2003, we're just now getting to this point here, how often do we need to, Mr. Ross has a question for you, how often do we need to update these impact fees once we get past this point? I know 2003's been a long time.
It certainly has. Most communities are updated every five years. Generally, the year after, you have to do your fifth-year update to your comprehensive plan. When you adopt the update to the comprehensive plan, that also tells you what priorities have shifted. And so, then you update the impact fee study right after. There's no other jurisdiction in the state of Georgia I'm aware of that has not updated an impact fee program for as long as y'all have not updated yours. Just about everybody's doing them at least every five years. Some of the high-growth, high-growth communities, they actually update them every couple of years, and they keep pushing, you know, right now we're looking at growth to 2040. You're going to need to get out to 2045, and then out to 2050 as the years go by, and growth continues to, to happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Clement?
And I would say, the issue that we had and the reason that we ended up having to split the funds is because when I went to staff about, we've got this pot of impact fees over here, and I've got a need in, at a park, we wanted to use the impact fees to do that, but the only way that I was able to get the impact fees was all the other commissioners wanted a piece of the pot. So, that's how we ended up splitting the, it was, we had a need in District 2, but we couldn't, because of politics, we couldn't get the need accomplished without everybody getting something. And that's what I'm hoping that you are going to be able to do, Mr. Ross, is to show us where the need is, and that it, it dictates the money is spent where the need is, and we've got to have a methodology to determine the need. And so, that's-
And, and the need is exactly what, what, what we're going to be looking at. It's important to remember that what, the impact fee study is not a plan. It's not a plan. It's a study of how much money can you collect-
Right.
-based on what are the facilities you're going to need in the future. You have a Parks and Recreation Plan. You have a Transportation Plan. Green space, I think, is part of the Parks and Recreation Plan. That's where you really decide, where did those, where do you need those tennis courts? And when do you need them, based on the growth that has already been projected in the impact fee study? But I'm not, I'm not going to be telling you, you need to put your tennis courts here and here. I'm going to tell you, you need 24 more tennis courts. And it's up to the, the board, through the planning process, to say, where are we going to put those tennis courts? Where's the need greatest? And it may be that you're putting tennis courts in one, in one district, swimming pools in another. And in terms of the money being spent, that's how you, I'm going to say, normalize the expenditures. Where, where are the improvements going? How much are they going to cost? And by, by allocating the facilities among the districts, you're allocating the money that goes with those facilities.
Okay. Well, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Well, this wasn't information-only segment, so we thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you for also responding to questions as well. So, okay. Thank you. The board looks forward to hearing from you in the future.
You will see me again.
Thank you. Okay. So, at this time now, we'll move into the next item, which is a public hearing, and this is regarding the Capital Improvement Element Annual Update, regarding the transmittal of the 2020 Capital Improvement Element Annual Update of the Comprehensive Plan. So, we welcome up Mr. Stacy, Stacy Jordan-Rudisil for that presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, the item before you at this time is the annual update to the Capital Improvement Element Update of the Comprehensive Plan. And so, as the name would suggest, we do this every year. We're a little bit later this year because of the COVID-19, and we were able to get an extension from the Department of Community Affairs. So, we're very, very happy that DCA was allowing us to, to do this. So, this is a public hearing, because it is nominally a part of our comprehensive plan, so we, we would ask that you call for a public hearing. But before that, if there are any questions, I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Yes. I know we've got an exhibit on this, but are, are there any questions or comments from, from the board before we begin the public hearing aspect? Okay. Hearing none. This is a public hearing, so those wishing to speak in favor or even in opposition will be granted three minutes each to come forward at this time. So, we will begin the public hearing now. So, if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor or against, would you please come forward now? Seeing none, hearing none, I will ask once more. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against, please come forward now. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. That concludes the public hearing aspect of it. So, again, are there any additional comments you'd like to make, Mr. Rudisil, before we-
So, the public hearing is to allow for staff to transmit this to DCA through the Atlanta Regional Commission, which is a requirement, and they do indeed take, or at least reserve two months to themselves to, to make comments or to approve it. And we need time during that two-month period to be able to make the changes that are indicated. And so, we'll bring this back before this board, before the deadline, which is February 28th this year. So-
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from the board? The floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Thomas. Is there a second?
There is.
Okay. We have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay. That seems to be unanimous. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move into our next item, which is the Resolution for BOC Approval of the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program Committees Regarding the CARES Act. So, we welcome up Ms. Kimberly Monast for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Today, I'll be presenting another summary update of the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program. But I want to start off with a couple of statistics of interest about the program. There's not a slide for this, because we prepared and submitted the PowerPoint earlier. If you approve this morning's roster, there will be 76 small businesses awarded under our program so far, with 10 more to come before you on December the 15th. Using this total of 86 potential small business awards, please note the following. 69 of these, or 80% of the total awards recommended by the review committee, have been for minority-owned businesses. 45, or 52%, of the awards have been for women-owned businesses. Eight of them, or 9.3% of the awards, have been for veteran-owned businesses. Keep in mind that a single business can fall under more than one of these demographics. The areas of the county that are represented are as follows. Two of the awards are in unincorporated Ellenwood, which is located in Henry County. Seven of them have been in the city of Hampton. Nine in Locust Grove. Forty in McDonough. Twenty-eight in Stockbridge. This system does not break down applications according to commission district. The last item of demographic interest is the length of time that the applicants have been a business in Henry County. While 43 of them, or 50% of the applicants, have been a business in Henry County for only five years or less, 11 of them, or 12.8%, have actually been a business for more than 20 years. The reason this is a significant variable is because it shows that COVID-19 has had a widespread effect on Henry County small business. Since we last spoke, we produced a video explaining the application process. It has 622 views since it was posted. The quality of applications has improved, and we have not had to return to applicants as much as in the past. So, the roster is before you. Oops, wrong way. There are a lot of pages. So, there are five pages. There are 29 small businesses on Exhibit A. I went too fast there. Sorry. Am I going too fast still?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know you guys have a copy of this. Let's try that again. Okay. I'm not going to read them out. That would be too much reading. But if you all have any particular questions about ones that you see, let me know. Okay. That's the second page. You'll note the ones that have asterisks next to them are ones that have been either reapplications or have come before the committee for a second or third time. So, they were able to get the information that the committee was looking for once they reapplied. That's the fourth page. And there are two more. And then, there are eight nonprofits. Recall that nonprofits do not have a ceiling. They can apply for as much money as they are able to have capability and competency in administering. What you have before you today is a resolution to accept the review committee's recommendation to award 29 small businesses and eight nonprofits for funding. I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
So, move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Holmes, a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further questions or comments? All in favor. Okay. That is a unanimous approval, and thank you much for your work there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We will now move into the public comment section. This is the time where we allow those who signed up prior to the board meeting to speak on county-related or non-related items, and you will be granted five minutes each. So, I look to the county clerk to see how many do we have.
We have four this morning that have signed up for public comment. Brian Jones, Cora James, Carmen Watkins, and Robert Kolpak.
Okay. Well, we'll ask if you will please come now in that order. And again, if you will address your comments to the board. So, again, again, the first name, again, if you will read it.
Brian Jones.
Mr. Jones. And then, again, the second person coming after him, if you will be prepared to come shortly after him, and that person will be?
Cora James.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, good morning.
All right. How you doing?
Very good.
All right. My name is Brian Jones, founder of Stay Fit Through the Arts, Inc. The purpose of me speaking is to make you all aware of Stay Fit Through the Arts, Inc. We are currently located at AD City Square Boulevard, McDonough, Georgia.
Yes, sir. We can barely hear you. I cannot see you. I really won't.
My bad. My bad. We are located at AD City Square Boulevard, McDonough, Georgia. Also, we have been in Henry County and various schools since 2016 and before the pandemic. I would like to say that on November the 4th, we were on the agenda, grant approval for the BOC meeting, and some council board members were needing additional information. Also, on November the 17th, we were on the agenda, grant approval for the BOC meeting, and the meeting got canceled. So, today, so today, I am requesting and wanted to see if you all can grant approval today. We have been waiting for months for our program approval, and the kids are suffering, and the children need materials, educational books and other educational materials to enhance their ability to succeed during this tough time. Stay Fit Through the Arts, Inc. mission is to inspire, educate, motivate, and mentor to children to improve their fitness through dance education. Ages are four to 18. We provide programs in acting, dance, art, music, and vocals. These programs promote physical fitness while simultaneously improving children's health, strengthening self-esteem, and incorporating artistic expressions by developing their dance skills. As the founder, I, Brian Jones, have danced with T-Boss, with TLC, and Salt and Pepper, and Skate, and different other entertainers. So, so to conclude, I would like to ask for approval today so that these children in our programs can continue their education.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, we just hear your comments, and staff or someone will follow back up with you at, at a later time.
These are all-
You still have two minutes and 42 seconds, so if you've got additional information, that's fine.
Okay. And these are the kids that we, we educate in the Henry County area. They perform at the NBA games. They perform at the NFL games and things like that. They don't have to pay no fees, and we provide all the uniforms and things like that. And also, I have 30 years of experience in dance, and I have over 20 years of experience in business experience as far as servicing the community. So, I'm not a good, you know, public speaking is not my thing, but I am definitely inside the community. We provide events at Belk. We do a lot of community things in Henry County. So, we've been in Henry County for like five years. So, we, we provide after-school programs at Smith Barnes Elementary School and places like that. So, we definitely in the community. So, I know the last meeting, you all had questions about it. So, I just wanted to bring the information to your, for awareness. Okay?
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Ms. Cora James.
Good morning to the Chair, the Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to say before I get started, so that I won't leave it out, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to address the board. And I want to say thank you from the last board meeting that we came to, because I was very, they didn't set the clock back for me. But anyway, I was, I was very heavy when I came the first time. And right now, I'm, I'm doing somewhat better. I'm still not sleep, oh, first of all, my name is Cora James. I live at 1225 Manor Way in Ellenwood, Georgia. And I want to say thank you, guys, for, the first time that we came, we had some issues, and the issue was with the property at 1299 Country Park Manor Way. Okay? My thing now is that I basically wanted to say thank you for the order. I don't know who did it. I know after we got from the Board of Commissioners meeting that the, when we got back out there, the code enforcement officers were there, and they did put up a sign to say, "Stop all work," because it was really, and I do have a picture, they were really destroying the streets and stuff like that. And it was- They were really destroying the streets and stuff like that, and it was hard. It was really hard to focus and to live around there with all that noise like that. My house still shakes. My house trembles. It's like it's an aftermath from an earthquake, okay? So, I'm still not sleeping. Nobody is there. I mean, basically, it's still being done like all night long, and I'm constantly getting up and down, okay? I also have a picture where I have these trucks. One of... Both trucks is my son, but he gave me the red truck, so that I use that to go out and help elderly people and cut their grass and stuff. That's what I do, okay? And my mom is one. My mom is nine, and her neighbor's eight to seven, so I do that, okay? By the street being opened up, and this is why I have this picture right here, because the street, the way he opened the street up, it is no closure there. We are vulnerable. I am vulnerable, okay? There's traffic back there all the time, even late at night. Cars go back there and sit now, okay? One day last week, I came home, and the truck wasn't... I've always had these trucks that... The reason I had them sitting there is so that they wouldn't do so much damage construction on my side, right? But my truck, and I've been there for thirty-seven years, I've never had any trouble with anybody breaking in or doing anything. My only problem was that those squirrels, okay? I had to fight a lot with the squirrels, but no defacing, no destroying anything like that, right? And basically, what I wanted to do is show you guys these pictures as well as what the street looked like now, even though this construction have ceased and the streets are still deplorable. It's really heartbreaking to come out, because I've worked, I've worked very hard there, and I want to leave something for my son as well. I am constantly, I'm constantly, even though the noise is not there, I'm constantly hearing that noise. I don't sleep at night. Every little thing I hear, you know, I get up and I jump, because I can't afford to go nowhere. I don't have no cameras or anything. My daughter told me, say, well, maybe Christmas, I'm telling you now, I'm giving you this camera for Christmas, okay? So that maybe you can lay there and look, and you won't have to jump all the time. And the odor, I don't know, seem like on a Friday evening, after everybody is gone, that horse odor come out of there, and it is ridiculous. You cannot... It starts Friday evening, Saturday evening, Sunday evening. You know, you can't call nobody. You ain't got nobody to call. Basically, I just... I don't know what else to do. I do know that he did comply and put the silk screen out there, and I don't want to be offensive to anybody, but my question is, is when all those code enforcement agency officer was coming out there, why could they not do this from the very get-go to relieve some of this stress and stuff that we have on us? And like the sign, you would think if they put a stop work, when they come out to say it's okay for him to work again, wouldn't you think? I would think that they would put a sign out to say, well, okay, this is okay, you know, a concession or something, you know? But we are not being informed. We are not being told anything out there. We are just there, and I am. I'm tired. I don't sleep, and my body is breaking down, because your body heals when you sleep. I can't sleep, and I'm having all kind of issues. I'm going back and forth to different doctors. Maybe I need to be going to a psychiatrist. I don't know, because these are a lot of issues that trouble me, you know? I'm trying to use up all my time, but basically, I just want to show the pictures of what the area looked like as of yesterday, after all of the rain. And how long we got to stay there and look at this? That's basically all that I have to say.
All right, well, thank you, ma'am. Your comments are duly noted.
The next speaker is Carmen Watkins.
Okay, thank you again. Okay, and our next person?
Hi, good morning, everyone. And again, I'd like to echo and thank you guys for what you guys did. The last time we met, on November the fourth, at the last meeting, again, my name's Carmen Watkins, and I live on the cul-de-sac across from Cora of the property located at twelve ninety-nine Manor Way. And I am here today to talk about... I'd like to know what the status is of the project. And also, to drive out of my cul-de-sac, I'm still faced with subjecting my vehicle to damage, because the whole expanse from coming out of my cul-de-sac, the only way that I can get out is to go through all this debris and the potholes and the dirt and the broken road, and so, coming in, coming out, you know, it's like an obstacle course. And so, I'm thinking to myself... I leave the house every morning before the sun comes up, because it's gotten to the point, and it has been since, I would say, it's just increased in October, and it's still very stressful to look at the road. I have to drive through it, coming and going, and then, not only that, the property of my... The value of my home has decreased because of this. And what I don't understand is, like Cora said, the permits were given when, in fact, it appears that he shouldn't have gotten them, because after the last meeting, people from the county came out and they put a stop work order in. And so, what I don't understand is how his needs or his wants, as a non-resident, he's able to continue coming back and forth and, you know, do whatever damage, but we are the ones that suffer from it. And so, in my mind, I'm thinking, if the permits were not legitimate from the beginning, there was no bond that he was made to put up, yet he was allowed to damage the road, and it's still there, and I'm still negatively impacted. So, it seems to me why it just wasn't stopped and halted at all. And also, what Chairman, yeah, Commissioner Thomas brought to our attention last time, I've looked at the plans, and with the twelve-stall pole barn that he plans to put in, how is he going to ensure that the lines are met as far as being distanced from our homes? In addition to that, the addition, you know, the vermin and whatever may come, how is that going to happen? And how are we going to be protected? And, you know, from June of last year, when we went to court and he was fined, and specifically, what I'm concerned with is the land disturbances and the jar bowing and root raking or bulldozing that he was allowed to do. He did that from... He continued to do that, even after he was fined. And he didn't get these new permits until September of 2020. That's fifteen months. And so, I'm just thinking, who's going to do something on our behalf? And you saw the pictures that Cora has, and the only additional thing that I had was, you know, looking at the last meeting that we had, and even though it's me that lives there and it's Cora that lives there, right on the cul-de-sac, it was so stressful looking at it, and I'm thinking, this is my home. This is where I live, and I can't imagine anybody being happy about this or having to live in these conditions. He doesn't live there. He lives in East Atlanta, but we live there, yet emotionally, we're suffering, and we can't sell our houses. And so, that's not fair to us, and so, that's my purpose of being here today. And one last thing that I want to do is, you know, the color pictures show something, but when I looked at the video from our last meeting, I'm thinking, this is my home. It was so overwhelming, because every day, I drive out of my house, back out, leave before the sun comes up. Then I come back home when the sun goes down, to avoid seeing and being part of this mess. And this is, in black and white, it's more impactful, because you really see the damage in this part of the street. My house is right here. Cora's is across here, but the whole expanse from here all the way across, it looks like that, and I can't get through without, like I said, running the risk of my vehicle getting damaged. Because of all this mud and dirt, my garage has mud in it that's on my tires. I get my car washed every week. As soon as I get home, I have to come down Country Pine Turn here. It's the only way I can get into my garage, and then it's littered with mud and clay. And as you can see, that is...
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, your time has expired. But thank you for your comments, and they have been duly noted, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robert Kolpak, last speaker.
Yeah, good morning, board, chair. This time last year, the board voted four-two to repair and reopen Cochran Park. The park's been opened and been repaired, and it seems like there were some shenanigans with the scope of work needed versus the actual work done. But I wanted to thank the chair, the D-three, the D-one, and D-four commissioners for resolving and getting the kids back to their ballpark. Actually, recently participated in a tournament there in October. It rained late in the day. Please report, there was no flooding. Those storm drains are working. The parking lot was full of cars. The fields were full of kids, coaches, and parents. The only drawback to that glorious day was no scoreboards. When the park closed in July of 2019, working scoreboards, then 2019, they ripped out the boards, cut the wires, so the person that's responsible for that, or the persons, or the D-five commissioner who ordered removal of the scoreboards...
Let's be careful about calling individuals out, but if you can.
I'm saying D-five, not saying names.
I understand. It's about the same, sir. Thank you.
Should be personally responsible for getting them functional again. It's having a tournament when the kids don't know what to score the game wasn't as much, and it's not going to invite people to come back for other tournaments. And I'm glad today we approved pickleball at Hidden Valley Park, and considering the senior centers at the same complex, and as the commissioner said prior, pickleball is a sport of future for seniors, it seems like a win-win. The understanding where the pickleball courts are going to go is where the basketball court used to be, and that was an asphalt surface. So, we removed that asphalt, and now we're just going to have to come back and add another surface. So, it seems like we had a little more planning, we could have saved some money. I guess if you don't personally pay for it, the cost is not an issue. And I'm glad I was able to shine a light on that long-neglected park, and appreciate the D commissioner providing resources, park not named village, and help get visibility for that park. Maybe we should host some events there and to add some excitement to those parks. And if we spent more time at these parks, improvements would be quicker. I know there was a master park plan, and we talked about it with that gentleman that was talking, that was tabled in September of this year. Maybe that's where we start with how to do the parks, because there's an understanding how to do it, but building new parks and having four parks staggered around an area on the same road in a dense area is not as nice as it could be. So, that's a master park plan. He puts the plan together, then you guys basically pay for it. Kind of would make sense. And then, as far as, in my district, I own a home in District Five, and it's a rental. I also own a home in D-four. And the area that I live in is rural, and right now, we've had recently some townhouses, crackerjack houses, and they just gutted all the property on Millers Mill Road. It... I understand we're talking about conservation lots, but there's one hundred and ninety-six acres, and they just basically cut everything down but a few trees. I'm glad that we're having that, but when the property values of those properties are going to be a hundred thousand dollars less than the existing values, it doesn't make a lot of sense to the current residents. We also have a big commercial area off of East Lake Parkway that needs to be filled up before we rezone any additional residentials. In 2018, we did not approve a gas station off of Rex Row in East Atlanta, because the community didn't want it. And I'm glad that commissioner did that. That was Commissioner D-five. In D-four, we have community meetings. We tell the commissioner what we do not want, yet we're told this is what we need. So, if you live inside the gates, and it buffers you from the low-end developments you're trying to put and add to D-four, it's not very helpful to the community. Apartments and townhomes do not fit in a rural area. We bought there because we like it the way it is. Please respect our wishes and listen to us at Town Halls. Current chair, you've been a blessing in this county, and you're a role model to me.
And we can't accept compliments either, so thank you.
If I ever decide to run for political office, I'll follow your lead as a guide on how to govern with dignity, respect, compromise for greater good of the community, and hope to stay involved in the community. And the incoming chair, I like her, and I will help her any way I can to make this the best community it can be now and the future. And as far as the water board, just the one last thing, if you had a pointy on the water board, you probably should know what's going on from that board. And then, when we have these meetings, red folder meetings on agenda items, you probably should review before, so you can have some of your questions answered prior. That's all I got for today, and about out of time, so thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, that does conclude our public comment section, and now we'll move to the approval of the minutes for the October sixth regular Board of Commissioners meeting and the October twentieth Board of Commissioners meeting. If there were no revisions or changes, the floor is now open for approval of those minutes. We have approval by Commissioner Barn. Second, from Commissioner Thomas, are there any questions or comments? All in...
What were you talking about, a date from the...
The approval of the minutes for the October sixth regular Board of Commissioners meeting and the minutes of the October twentieth Board of Commissioners meeting. Okay, so we had a motion, approval, and a question. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Those minutes are unanimously approved. So now, we'll invite up the county manager for any comments.
Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This morning, I just wanted to provide a brief update on our COVID-19 numbers and an update on testing sites and some information that we'd like to pass along to the board. Don Ash is going to provide us with the update on the COVID-19 numbers, and then I'm going to have our deputy county manager, Brad Johnson, come and give an update on our testing sites. Also, we'll provide to the board, if not later this afternoon, first thing tomorrow. Governor Kemp has issued another executive order extending his current executive order to January eighth, 2021, and so I'll have our county attorney review that, and if there's any changes that the board needs to be made aware of, I'll definitely share that information. So, this morning, again, we'll have Don giving an update on COVID, and then Mr. Johnson will give an update on testing sites.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Good morning, Chair and board, again. Just want to share some numbers with you as it relates to COVID cases in Henry County. I will start off by giving you a statewide number, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and one. For Henry County, and it's important to note this, we do a weekly call and update for our COVID committee and leadership team. But on yesterday, the COVID numbers for Henry County was seven thousand, six hundred and four. I just checked it a little while ago, which increased by eighty-one cases overnight. So, we're at seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five cases with a hundred and thirty deaths in our county. Last week, we tested four hundred and eighty people at the Spock site at Heritage Park. Just want to make note to you guys that it was abbreviated week. We only tested to Wednesday. They were closed Friday and Saturday. The week prior to that, the testing numbers were eight hundred and twenty. The site is closed today due to cold weather, so we are working with it, and the deputy county manager will give you some information on the projects we're working on. Just a couple other numbers I want to share with you guys as well. Cases are increasing in Henry County as well as the state of Georgia. Over the week, last week, we had fourteen additional cases at Piedmont Henry Hospital. They went from thirty-nine to roughly fifty-one cases. One of the things we're doing internally as part of our emergency management and our leadership team, we are working with public health in anticipation of vaccines, developing vaccine strategies and vaccination sites for our county, so we are aware of that. I would also like to let you know that thirty-nine facilities in Henry County has signed up through public health to be a part of a closed pod and to sign on as vaccine sites throughout our county as well. And lastly, I'll share with you guys that we've worked closely with our nursing facilities. The biggest concern for COVID has been nursing and the long-term care facilities. Had an opportunity to talk to the director of Westbury yesterday, which is our largest facility in Henry County, and they're reporting currently at this time, no deaths, no cases, and no staff members affected. I'll take any questions you have for me this morning.
Okay. See Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Thomas?
One question. I'd like to know, are you receiving any reports from the school system as related to COVID cases among the students, since they have partially reopened, I should say?
So, we actually get two ways of communications. We get direct communication from Dr. Mary Elizabeth and the Board of Education, but we also get direct reports from District Four epidemiologists for impacted schools. So, we do receive those reports weekly from the school systems. They are not in the red, but I will also go ahead and tell you, as a part of our logistical support for the Board of Education, we just sent over eight thousand additional PPE masks for the school system.
So, the numbers you gave us just now, they include the students or included in that number? Or are they broken out separately?
So, the numbers, we get general reports from the public health in the state of Georgia. These numbers are any cases that are identified in Henry County. It would be any COVID case that is identified in Henry County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
I asked a couple of months ago about adding some COVID testing sites throughout the county instead of just at Heritage Park, and I'll tell you, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the scare in the county, once again, I think I've been a Heritage man. when we had the scare in the county, once again, I think I've been to Heritage maybe three times just for testing. And every time I go into the state site and put in zip codes from any side on the west side of the county, any of those zip codes, it sends you to Clayton County. It, I had to go 25 miles out from District Two, from where I live, to get Heritage Park to come up. That is because people on the west side of the county is closer to locations in other counties than they are to the location in our own county. I asked for millions of dollars to be set aside with the CARES Act to create other locations in this county for testing sites, and it has yet to be done. And so once again, I'm asking staff to create testing sites that will accomplish what we need to accomplish for people in the Hampton area, the west side of Locust Grove area, the top part of District Two area and the west side of the county. We're still having the same issues. We are closer to Fayette, we're closer to Clayton than the one that's in Heritage Park. So I don't know why that hasn't been done. I've asked for how you guys have spent the monies that was supposed to be allocated for that. I just don't know. COVID is rising and we should have been ready for testing sites on that side. And it's just not fair for constituents to have to go out of the county.
Commissioner Clemmons, let me address the first part of your question. I have communicated your concerns to District Four as it relates to the geographical locations of that testing site information. I did, when me and you had that first conversation. So I have communicated that to them several times about allocating to the right location in the county.
Let me say this, and this is probably for Sherri. There are several counties in our region that have opened up testing sites. They did not wait on the state health department to do it. They used their CARES Act money and they worked with other hospital agencies. We have a clinic and those clinics and those other agencies provided the services for COVID testing. They didn't just have to work with Department of Health. Clayton County did it at the airport. They did it in other areas. They did it on Mount Zion. Fulton County did it at a drive-through location. Clayton, you know, other counties did it. We do not have to work with Department of Public Health because then they dictate where we put it. We have the funds to and we've yet to help prepare these locations for our county residents. So I would like for us not to depend on Department of Public Health because they're going to just say where it needs to be from a regional standpoint. And I'm talking about the constituents of Henry County.
So Commissioner Clemmons, part of what Brad is standing there for is to give an update on what we've been doing to try to get locations set up. I understood clearly that you didn't want to work with the Department of Public Health. We've also reached out to our provider at our health clinic or health at Henry CARES, and there is a CERN certification that we have to have in order to provide testing at that location, which we've been trying to work with their legal team, legal team and their risk management team on it. We've been working on this since the board elected to allocate funding for it, but it is not a simple process. And I understand that other jurisdictions may be utilizing their CARES funding for it. But one of the things we have to remember is that we were under a very tight deadline for securing those, the CARES funding. We've secured the funding and we are working diligently to try to get these locations set up. One of the concerns that we've had is that we've got, once we get them set up, we've got to get people there. And you just heard from Mr. Ash that while we have locations set up, we still don't have people that are going to do the testing. And so it does cost money to do it. We have the money set aside to do it. And I think this morning, the information that Mr. Johnson's going to present will address what your concerns are. But we are not, Mr. Ash did reach out to the Department of Public Health because that is who we partner with for the current location. But I understood clearly that your desire was to look outside of the Department of Public Health. And I've heard from another commissioner that there are companies or businesses out here that are offering the testing. What we want to do is to be able to offer the testing at no cost to employees and to citizens. And so that's what we're looking for, a mechanism that we can actually provide the testing at no cost because a number of the businesses that are offering the testing, they are charging for it. And so we don't want to partner with the business to give them money to charge for the testing when we know that we have a free location. So if Mr. Johnson, if you'll give him an opportunity to present, it may answer your question. If not, tell me it done.
But let me just make a correction. I'm not saying I don't want to partner with Department of Public Health because before we had the funds, Don Ash and I had the conversation about why jurisdictions were partnering with Department of Public Health. We talked about some of them were pulled in, their public safety, the fire departments were there, that were administering, and they used the Department of Public Health because they had the staff. So I'm not saying I don't want to partner with them. I'm saying you can partner with them, but you need to identify the location instead of letting Department of Public Health identify the location. I'm just saying we need to identify a location so that residents can travel within 10 miles of our county instead of having to be 25 miles to get to a testing site. So that's something that staff and Mr. Ash can do it best because he does, he has the GIS there. He knows where it probably needs to be to do that or Brad. So we can partner with DPH. I just don't want them to dictate that it needs to be back in Heritage Park or, I mean, we have one there. We need to find somewhere else to meet those needs. So I'm not concerned about private businesses and I'm definitely not concerned about paying them to do it. So the monies can be used for staffing. And I think what Clayton County did when Mr. Ash and I looked at it was before, they gave their fire department extra fund, they paid the fire department to come over to administer or something was happening. So.
They assisted, Commissioner. They assisted.
They assisted them. Okay.
Actually, the Department of Health conducted the airport testing and the Clayton County testing.
So maybe it was you that I spoke to about this. So we, okay, so if you all can't figure it out, I can call the other counties and find out how they did it.
We've already spoke to other counties and I can tell you how they did it and how we presented for the last three months trying to do it, even up to the state level with our legislators there. Because we, again, the Jonesboro Road site, or Jonesboro Road, the Heritage site is underutilized. We're only hitting about 45 to 50% per day of capacity. I understand you want to do local jurisdictions. However, the testing complications are a little more complicated just going by and test. We just can't go by test. By state law, this is the Department of Health, state of emergency as the governor's orders came out yesterday, again, reassuring that the Department of Health being the emergency support function that covers the pandemic, we've reached out to the state to try to buy tests from them. We can buy tests. We just can't get a lab to produce the test results. So what we found is to get about 5,000 tests could be right at a half million dollars that we've gotten prices. There's a rapid test. The problem with a rapid test, as you hear, the nation, national federal government sent down the rapid test to the states, we cannot, the state could not distribute the rapid test without a CLIA license. A CLIA license is a environmental or lab license that was done back in the Clinton administration to make sure all labs are the same and accredited. However, we were purposely doing that for victims or for patients to have symptoms or something for rapid testing. We can get them to help they needed and we can be mobile. We could actually, our goal was to send our staff out, have spots set up all over the county. Actually, at one time, we were trying to do 17 different sites per day was our plan, but we cannot get the test to make that happen. So we reached out to the same provider that provides them to the state. We've actually went to them and made contact. And the issue is, again, the testing laboratory to get the test sent back. And we've got a cost of that. And we've actually got procurement looking again at how we put that out to, to get the best results we can financially while we also get the needed testing. We have about 10 testing sites in Henry County now. However, only one's free, especially if you don't have insurance. We have an issue with how do we get the ones there that cannot afford to drive to Heritage? How do we get them there? We're trying to provide some transportation efforts through our transit for that. So if the wish of the board to continue us to do that, it's going to cost the funding, which we know, Commissioner, you mentioned we have the CARES funding, which is now just general fund funding because the CARES has been used, money's been put back in. So it's actually opened up more avenues. You can use it however you want to now, not for CARES restriction that can be used for testing. But that testing will cost an average between 140 and 150 per person. And that was for them. Now, resource wise, for us to take the sample, it has to be a person for their lab. They have to come sample it because they won't just take our test that we administer, even the paramedics, and send it to their lab. It has to be a lab tech that gives the testing to send it back to most companies that Don's reached out to. However, now that we have the less invasive, the self-testing, we're looking at how we get self-testing. That's what they do at Heritage now. You self-test and you put it in the back of the bag and you send it as we several others did, mind you, a week ago. But there are opportunities now with the self-testing that were not available back a month ago when you asked the question again about the testing. The nasal pharyngeal testing is a whole different ballgame of getting some, that, that kind of line set. Even recently, we reached out to the state and understand your, your issues with the state about how we can supplement manpower because we can do that today. And the refer back from them was basically their resource. They needed a tent, increased funding from the county for the health department, PPE, an ultracold freezer and a scanner. And they were not interested in opening up another lane at that facility to get people just rotate just quickly in and out. So the best bet if the board, and actually they're decreasing the hours in the very near future, as we're told yesterday by Mr. Ash who's got information. So it is best, if the board wants to, is to hire companies to come out and set our pods up in different locations unless there's a different direction the board wants to go on.
I think we need to work with Department of Public Health and I think we need to get another site on the other side. I think the reason why you have a lack of people at Heritage Park is because it's too far for the majority of the people to get to. I think that had they opened up another location where it was a more populated area, they would have had more people coming. It's just too far. People would prefer to go with, when we put in DPH, it's sending us out of the county.
Even Monday, Commissioner, we even asked for, put one in Stockbridge, Hampton. They were not interested in doing that. And in fact, even on our call, we actually asked Mayor Ford, who's the chair of the health department, too. He actually requested again and they're not interested in putting in, in any more sites in the public health in Henry County. I wish I had better news. That's just the facts. And we've asked, actually Monday, yesterday, asked for additional sites.
You know, it's sad because our board, the chair of that Department of Public Health Board was our chair of this commission board. And I know that she allowed Ford to sit on that board, but if the chair of the DPH Board is in Henry County and they cannot get us another testing site and the testing site in Henry County is going away, that's troublesome. And I think that we need to figure out how we fix that. And so I hope the board has heard that they're getting ready to close the site in the midst of.
Not close it. They're decreasing the hours.
Decreasing the hours in the midst of COVID numbers rising.
Well, let me speak to that since there is a reference. First of all, this has been a high priority with the, the chair of the Board of Health, who is Mayor Ford. And, and I do sit on that board and that's why we do participate every week on getting the updates and listening to our emergency management team. Regarding the testing sites, we just had that conversation on yesterday, meaning that we have highlighted that the fact that we need to have more testing sites in other parts of this county was made a statement of. And also the Department of Health had already stated that they did not have the resources. And if they did need to place any additional sites, that it would definitely cost more money. Now, what I would also say is Mayor Ford is already speaking with the commissioner of the Department of Health. We will, in fact, I told them it needs to be a Department of Health Board meeting that needs to happen so that Henry County can get additional testing sites. But at the same time, we've got to show that we are making every effort here in Henry County to make sure that the testing is done because the sites that we have, we've offered transportation and there are people that have not been requesting testing. So that's why there is this mismatch. You know, there's got to be a demand in order for these results to occur. So just do know that this is still a serious matter, will continue to be a serious matter. Whether I am the chair of that board or not, it has been a major fact and have been participating and actually representing the respects of the Henry County citizens. But I also say that I've been taking forth the comments from this Board of Commissioners. So it has been taken very serious and we do, again, hope that we will get the needs that are met here in Henry County because again, this COVID is not going away until, again, the vaccine is implemented. And in addition to the fact, we encourage individuals to please continue to do what you can. That's why I thank everyone who's here today who are practicing social distancing. You're wearing your mask. I've seen many of us use a hand sanitizer to make sure that things are clean because we've got to have some responsibility in that ways as well. So again, this is a serious matter, will continue to be a serious matter. And even in the conversation I've had with the chair-elect, this was the number one thing that put on the transition list of things that needs to stay as a primary priority for Henry County. So again, I want to commend this team because they continue to work with the hospital. They are, again, requesting demands from the Department of Health. Mayor Ford is already working with the commissioner because we've gone past the District Four leader to go to the commissioner to talk about the needs for Henry County. So again, I just appreciate what you're doing. And again, citizens, we do ask for your support to help us practice the CDC guidelines to control the spread of this virus. Yes, Commissioner Clemmons?
Sherri, can you make sure that they know that we have millions of dollars to invest in keeping our COVID testing site in Henry County, increasing the hours or at least expanding to another location to see if we can get more testing done? People just don't want to go that far over and they're going out of the county to be tested, which is what's happening. I get calls every week, where can I go get testing, Commissioner Clemmons? Where can I go? When I put in my zip code, it's telling me to go to another county. So we definitely need to address it. And I've been saying this for months.
We've worked definitely diligently with them on because you have to put 30281 to get Heritage. And I've been tested several times myself. So you have to put that. If you put 302, 53 or 52, you will not get the Heritage. They've worked, they've started working on it, but there has been a problem since day one of getting the Heritage site located.
Okay. And I want to stress that I'm not talking about working with private agencies or giving our money to a business unless that's the last resort. We need to keep DPH. It's, it's, I trust the accuracy of the state's information and the labs. And I think that our citizens deserve to have something that we trust as well. But I will be continuing to talk about this until we get more sites. The numbers are rising and I'm really concerned. Even it's affecting our employees and we've got to keep a site in Henry and we need more than one.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Listening to the discussion, and I do agree that we have to take care of our citizens and they do need other options. I wanted to know if you would explore the possibility of partnering with doctors who have sites up in Henry County and it's often rapid testing and we'd be able to pay for that for our employees. That would be another way to get that testing done right away. Or if there are other funds that we can use to help pay for other people needing that tested from COVID funds. As Commissioner stated, we have monies available, but we may have to be smarter about how we use it. There are doctors who have their offices available now, provide a rapid testing, have the right certifications. Maybe we don't have to create the whole building, but you can have a partnership to work with them. They're in business to do this. So let's look at that option and see about putting that in place. It won't take long to do it. It's some type of memorandum of understanding, some way to determine how they'll be compensated. They have all the medical facilities and that's what should be happening.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'd like to, to make a comment. I think this board should consider amending the agenda for a resolution. And again, Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Thomas, you are welcome to help shape that resolution. Then the resolution could address the fact that we would like to partner with the Department of Health or private doctors to addition, to offer an additional test site where possible using the CARES Act funding that has been allocated here in Henry County. So I'm open to amending the agenda for that resolution if, if there, and I make that motion to do so, to amend the agenda if there is a second.
I'll second it.
No, but Patrick, we already have a resolution in place. Can somebody pull it and educate, you know?
Excuse me. I have the floor right now, Commissioner Clemmons. And we just, I made a motion. Commissioner Thomas just made a second. So now we can open it up for discussion. So Commissioner Clemmons, you've got the floor now.
Thank you. Patrick, we already made a resolution to use CARES Act funds. Sherri, how much did we put aside to do this to, for COVID testing? Because we already have a resolution for them. And the question is, Patrick, do we need to make another resolution if we already have a resolution for it?
Well, if you already have a resolution, I mean, there's no reason to have two identical resolutions. I don't recall what that resolution was. I'm looking to see if I can find.
We got it right here.
And the date that we did this because that's why I keep going back to the same resolution that hasn't, and I signed it.
So if you see A there, Commissioner, it's 40%, 40% for county. And that was for related expenses. And the resolution was never, you mentioned the testing, it's never.
The clerk did not put it in the.
The one you signed is not, is not specify this to do testing. You've mentioned it. The one you signed is not specified as to do testing. You've mentioned it, but it's for COVID expenses, it's a 40%.
And I'm glad we're bringing this to the attention because this is more than once that this has happened, that we put stuff in, and when I go back and ask for the minutes on it, or where's the resolution on it, it's not there. And I know that we had this conversation, and I wanna pull the recording on that as well. And I just wanted to point this out to the commissioners again. There it is, E. Now, that says what's eligible, Sherri, and then I asked for it to, a percentage to go towards the.
Commissioner Clemmons, I'd like to make another comment as well.
August 18th is this one, Patrick. We're clear, Commissioner?
So I think that if, because we still can't find it, I think that what we need to do is to look at the amount of monies that we have and make sure that money has not been spent.
Has not been spent.
There was a certain amount that was supposed to be put aside for testing sites, and I think, Chair, respectfully, I would ask that we get that number so that when we do the resolution that you're trying to do, that we add the number amount to it, because it's gonna be important that we know how much we can spend before we decide that we're gonna partner or do whatever, and it's not here. That's what I wanted. I want to pull that resolution, look at the amount that was supposed to be set aside for that, so that we can make a solid resolution saying 2 million or whatever it was, because there was an amount, and it's not even here.
Okay. All right, I think what I'm hearing, and what I will do is rescind the motion to make sure that, again, that we at least include the amount. But, again, the part of what we're trying to specify is to make sure that we are getting the testing, and we talked about two different options. So if you can bring that resolution, or bring a resolution for the board to review prior to the next meeting on December 15th, that would be fine. Also, you can go back and look at the recording to make sure everything is recorded correctly so that the resolution is clear and is not a duplicate. So that is fine. So I'll rescind that resolution at this time.
And Chair, as a recommendation.
That motion, I should say, yes.
May I, Chair, please include the option that I just discussed, excuse me, partnering with local physicians who have already set up sites and their offices to do rapid testing and other testing to find out how we can also pay for our employees or others to go there, and we do the compensation for it. Okay?
So that's one of the recommendations I was gonna make, Chair, is that what you said. However, the 40% is in there, not encumbered. The plan for that is, it's not been spent, we've got that. We do have COVID expenses. During mid-year, we're looking at getting how to do it, how to reimburse, if needed, the general fund for COVID. As you know, we have, and right now, we're working with the courts. The court orders to get the courts back open, so that funding is still, is there available, and it's from 3.8, I think it is, as we looked it up. So we'll definitely have that planned for you. We'll have different options. One for partnering with public health. We'll reach out to them again. And, again, as we told them, we do have funding for, to help them. We'll be more specific and get that answer, and the private industry, how we can partner with private, again.
Well, again, this is an emergency. That's why I would even suggest that we actually amend the agenda, because I think the agenda should only be amended for emergency purposes, but this is important, and, of course, we do know that numbers are going to peak even higher than what we have, just because we're coming off the Thanksgiving holidays. But, again, this will continue to remain a major priority as it has been. So, thank you much. Okay, did you all have any other updates from the county managers team? Do you have any other updates? Okay, well, thank you, and that was a good discussion, Board, as well. All right, we'll now move to the commissioners' comments, and we'll start with District 1. Do you have any comments, District 1? District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5? And I have no comments either. So we'll now move into the upcoming meetings and events. Our next meeting is December 15th at 6:30 PM, and, again, this is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time now, we'll accept a motion to adjourn if there's no further business for this board. I have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, a second from Commissioner Barn. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? Thank you. All right, and thank you all for tuning in as well.